Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in the business meeting, September 24, 2015. First thing we do is our county administrator calls the roll.
Well, good evening, Commissioners. We are joined this evening by Mr. Chris Story, representing County Council, and then to my left, of course, is Mary Rathke, our Clerk of the Board. So I'll start the roll. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Do you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which has no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm trying to change people's habits, but you know, you get to saying it with a comma in there.
It's a nationwide problem, isn't it?
Indeed, it is. All right, please note that we have some business to take care of, some pretty non-controversial public hearings. There's three of them, and they'll precede the public discussion about marijuana. So be patient with us, and this should go fairly fast. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, we don't have any citizen communications?
Excuse me. If you want to talk to the Board on something other than marijuana, now is the time to indicate whether you've given me a card or that you will give Mary a card. There isn't anybody.
No cards.
No cards. Well, there you go.
Okay, very good. Well, we do have three public hearings this evening. All three involve boundary change matters. The first is a board order to consider boundary change CL-15-003, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority, and I will invite Mr. Chris Story to give you a report and recommendation on this matter.
Good evening, Commissioners. This comes before you as the Boundary Commission of Clackamas County. This is not because you are the governing body of Sunrise Water Authority, but because you get to decide whether or not annexations are to take place. We have received an application from a property to annex into the Sunrise Water Authority. The property owner desires it. Sunrise Water Authority is fine with it. They have gone through the public notice process, and we have undertaken the appropriate evaluation pursuant to statute and made a staff report available to the public, advertised this hearing, and now here we are. This property is approximately 28 and a half acres, located in the eastern portion of Happy Valley, and I know that comes as a big surprise to you. And the annexation is necessary to get water available to the property where they would then be able to annex. Joining me is Ken Martin, the Boundary Consultant, who has done a lot of the advertising and legwork for this project, and he is available to answer any questions you may have about the property or the evaluation.
Commissioners, any questions of Chris or Ken? All right, I'm going to open a public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So Chair?
Yes.
I do have a question.
Certainly.
My question has to do with some media attention about an annexation Happy Valley is considering within a neighborhood, cherry-stemming down, and I am sorry, I should have asked this before, because I don't remember the name of the neighborhood. Are you familiar with?
I've heard of a couple issues along those lines out in that neck of the woods. I will note that we don't have any authority or control over what Happy Valley annexes. The only role the Board gets to play is in the special district overlap that happens. So the decision of annexing into the city or not is within the city's purview. We then review annexations into special districts such as Sunrise Water Authority.
Which is what I was going to ask. So let's say Happy Valley decides to annex. Prior to this annexation, they could then do the annexation to the Water District, correct?
No.
No. So in theory, if you didn't want something to annex, or you were interested in that discussion, you could halt this annexation to the Water District, and you would have to deal with that before Happy Valley could annex it.
Well, we can't stop the Happy Valley's process. It can happen on its own timeline. We can consider the appropriateness of an annexation into a special district such as Sunrise Water, or for example, our next hearing is Clackamas County Service District Number One for Sewer Service. But there are certain specific statutory criteria that we're required to use in evaluating the decision whether or not to allow the annexation, and that's included in the staff report and proposed order. So we do an evaluation, and the Board is supposed to exercise its judgment about whether or not those are appropriately met.
Okay. Commissioner Savis?
I was just going to ask Commissioner Bernard if there was an issue that he wanted to share with us. I'm just kind of curious as to what it's about.
Well, I've gotten a couple of calls, not a ton of calls, about an area that Happy Valley is considering annexation and building multiple, I think, a development right in the middle of a housing development. It used to be perhaps a school district property that the school district was going to build on, and the school district sold it, and a developer is going to develop it. It's high density, and there was some concern about what that was. But because I don't know the details specifically about it, you know, I'm just going to, somebody could have been here tonight who had an issue
Right.
with this annexation could have come forward, but nobody did. So, and I don't really have an issue with it. I'm happy with Happy Valley doing what they're doing, so I just thought I'd ask the question.
I'm happy with Happy, too. And there's a Happy Valley representative in the front row, but I signaled her up, and she won't come, and I don't blame her.
So Chair, I move we approve the board order for boundary change number CL-15-003, annexation to Sunrise Water Authority.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Pass is five zero. Next.
Okay, the next item is boundary change CL-15-004. This is an annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Again, Mr. Story and Mr. Martin are here to give an explanation.
And again, clarifying that you are sitting as the Boundary Commission of Clackamas County and not as the governing body of CCSD Number One, which you also serve at various times. Since Mr. Martin has made the effort to come here, I thought it would be great if he could offer this presentation.
This is a 5.22 acres annexation to the Service District. It's inside the city of Happy Valley. That decision was already made. They've already done their approvals for the subdivision, but it's a piece of property that was not previously in CCSD Number One. CCSD Number One is the district that serves all of the rest of Happy Valley, so we need to annex it to the district, and that's the proposal.
I will note that pursuant to board policy, CCSD Number One doesn't provide urban-level sewer services unless a property annexes into a city. So this is pursuant, that's why the timing of it is that the city goes first, and then we annex it into the Service District to allow sewer.
When did that position change?
Well, that position changed in 2009.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the board order for boundary change number CL-15-004, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Did we open and close the hearing?
I don't think we did.
Oh, yeah. That was probably jumping the gun there.
I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing. Go ahead, Tooties. We do it again.
I got to do it again?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, folks. I move we approve the board order for boundary change number CL-15-004, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Pass is five zero.
Okay, so this third one is boundary change CL-15-005. Again, an annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One, and I will ask Mr. Martin to give an explanation of the proposal.
This is an annexation to CCSD Number One. It covers much of the same territory that was in the first proposal you heard, which was an annexation to the Water District. Again, we're just following up, getting this into the Service District so that it can get sewer service to serve the development which is proposed. You see, it does have a bit of an odd map, but that development is a larger proposal. Some of it is already in the city and already in the district, and that's the reason for that rather odd boundary.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners, first?
So I think what you said on the last one, again, I'm just trying to clear up that other first one. What you said on the last one is that normally the city annexes it first, and then we have the discussion about annexing to the Sewer District.
Or the Water District, whichever is the service provider, yes.
And you know, 2009 might have had something to do with me.
Uh-oh.
Because there was a Sewer District annexation to an area outside Milwaukee, and then they came to the city for the rest of the services. So they paid all the fees to the city, I mean, to the county, then came to the city, and I wasn't very happy with that. So we kind of changed that, so they had to kind of ask us first. And so we got the fees, and the county didn't get them all.
Now you're with the county, and you want those fees back?
No, I don't. I don't want them back.
It's fine with me.
No, but I mean, because I thought there was something a little strange there. Okay.
Yeah, and to clarify, there was a request from both the city of Milwaukee and the city of Happy Valley, and to some extent, the city of Damascus, if they got prepared to do those annexations, because what was happening is large subdivisions were being created right on the edge of a city. They were paying lower SDCs, and then subsequent to full development, petitioning to annex into the city and trying to access the full range of services at a city level without having to pay the full freight of cost. So it was an arrangement between the municipalities to make sure that we didn't have a free-rider problem.
All right, Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Savis?
I just want to take this opportunity to highlight the good news that, you know, development's occurring, and this is a step towards that, but I also want to take the opportunity to say that it's all that much more reason to be concerned about how much sewer capacity we have left. So as we have limited capacity, I'm not sure what 26 acres will equate to in EDUs, equivalent dwelling units, but it certainly ramps up the anxiety a little bit.
Indeed. All right. Any further discussion on the Commissioners' part? I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change number CL-15-005, annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Pass is five zero. So it wasn't that easy. And now on to the meat of the subject tonight. Mr. Krupp, well, I might as well introduce this first. The Commission has agreed to have a public discussion tonight. We will not be deliberating toward a decision. This is not official testimony that gives you any standing, because it's not a hearing. However, we're here to listen to everybody's point of view. After this is introduced by Mr. Story, and we give an opportunity for you, some 40 people, to talk, if you would do this. First of all, if you're in the audience and you agree with what the speaker said, then after they're done, just raise your hand. And that gives us an idea of the flow of the evening. If somebody has said almost exactly what you wanted to say, just tell me that you passed, and we'll go on. That way, we can move this along. I'll call you up by twos, and I'll put two on deck. So if the on-deck people can scoot up there as fast as they can, we'll get you out of here earlier in the evening. So, Mr. Story, you're going to call forward somebody, or Mr. Krupp?
Well, so Mr. Story's going to trade places
Oh, no.
with Mr. Nate Boderman from County Council's office, and then our Planning Director, Mike McAllister, is here to give you a brief report in advance of the opportunity for public discussion.
Just one more thing to remind her, for those who've come in late, if you wish to speak, turn in a blue card to Mary up here, that's Mary, in the next few minutes so we can get you online, okay? And I have put them together as they've come in.
Well, they're outside. I'm sorry. I didn't know that. For the record, Nate Boderman, not Chris Story, here from the County Council's office. We're here to talk about marijuana, marijuana land use issues, and the purpose of this evening's discussion really is, there's a couple reasons that we're here tonight. One, it's an opportunity for staff to share information on the background of what we've done to date concerning marijuana land use regulations, and particularly with respect to enable to summarize some of the options for potential regulations that you have before you as we move forward here over the next few months. This is also an opportunity, as you indicated, for public comment on issues related to marijuana land use, and an opportunity for the Board to receive those comments here. There's a number of issues surrounding marijuana on the table right now, whether it be opt-out or certain manners of regulations that we have through our zoning and development ordinance, and tonight's an opportunity to speak to all of that. I do want to emphasize that this is not a land use hearing on draft regulations, and what I mean by that is that the zoning regulations that we published earlier this week, the Zoning Division, put out a draft of zoning regulations. Those are proposed as just that, zoning amendments to our zoning ordinance, and state law has very specific procedures for adoption of zoning regulations. We've indicated on the slide up above the dates that we have scheduled for specific hearings with regards to those zoning and development ordinance, or to consider those zoning and development ordinance regulations. And as you can see, that's October 26 and November 2 for the Planning Commission, and November 23 and December 2, so for the Board of Commissioners. So all that to say that there will be separate opportunities for the Board to deliberate on specific zoning and development ordinance proposals. Tonight is not that time. And so to the extent that comments are made by the public, the Board may not be able to specifically speak to particular language in the zoning and development ordinance. Again, there's an opportunity, as the hearings indicated on the slides above, but if, please feel free to make comments on anything that you do see, but also be sensitive to the fact that the Board may not be able to respond directly to specific language requests.
So I had a question.
Yes.
So would this be, comments made tonight will be part of the public record used during the land use hearing?
What we anticipate doing is incorporating audio of this hearing into the ultimate record that goes before, or the ultimate record that's created for the zoning and development ordinance. Again, I'll back up. Those dates that we've indicated above, those are the dates really that are associated with the zoning development ordinance regulations. As you can see, testimony that's provided to our Planning Division at the email address above, those will be, those comments will be incorporated specifically. And so if you do have anything in writing tonight, please feel free to email those over to the email address indicated above, or show up at the October 26 hearing, because then you can be sure that all of those comments are specifically incorporated into the land use record. Again, tonight's not the land use hearing, and I understand it's sort of a, kind of the legal nuances that go along with it, but this is a separate process, and we need to respect that because of the state rules. A bit of background, I think most people are familiar with this, and so we'll go through it. Last general election, Measure 91, was approved by the Oregon voters. In Oregon, it was also passed by the margins indicated above in Clackamas County. Subsequent to that, the legislature in the 2015 session passed a number of bills related to marijuana regulation, House Bill 3400 being the most significant of those, and that really modified and expanded upon many of the provisions found in Measure 91. Under state law, Oregon Health Authority has jurisdiction over medical marijuana, and Oregon Liquor Control Commission, the OLCC, will be taking the lead on recreational marijuana. I will note that there's a significant body, or a significant portion of the regulatory framework that OLCC is working on right now with respect to recreational marijuana. And so we did publish our first draft, our first crack at zoning and development ordinances earlier this week, but understand that that was done not knowing what OLCC will ultimately adopt. And so we're sort of fumbling our way through this, trying to guess what OLCC is going to do while also trying to fill in some gaps that we see with respect to House Bill 3400. And so that's some of the background, some of the players in the regulation scheme there. State law in House Bill 3400 really sets forth seven categories with marijuana businesses on the recreational side. This includes producers, processors, wholesalers, and retailers, and on the medical side, all those categories except for wholesalers. And so when you're looking through the regulations in House Bill 3400, any activities related to marijuana outside of the personal use and possession really falls in one of these categories up above. The county has three options moving forward in terms of regulation, I guess you can say of marijuana. The first one, I'll explain, and then I'll pass it over to Mike McAllister, who I should have introduced earlier. Sitting to my left is Mike McAllister, Director or the manager of the Planning Division here, and he'll take options two and three. So our first option here that we want to talk about is what people refer to as the opt-out. And under House Bill 3400, the county has the authority, I guess you could say, to opt-out of one or more of six categories of marijuana businesses. So I mentioned seven categories of marijuana businesses. We don't have the option of opting out of the production category of the medical side of things. Opting out of one or more of the six categories does a few things. One, it places a temporary moratorium on the facilities which are identified in the opt-out. If the Board moves forward with an opt-out, it will be placed on the county ballot in the next statewide general election, which is November of 16. The county would then be prohibited from imposing local taxes on marijuana sales as is permitted right now, or is will be permitted for recreational marijuana, and the county is disqualified from receiving a share of the state tax revenue on marijuana sales. So that's a few of the things that would happen if the county moved forward with the opt-out. Again, we'll note that it doesn't impact, we don't have the option of opting out of personal grow, use, or possession, and it won't impact medical marijuana processors and dispensaries that are already registered.
Thank you. Again, my name's Mike McAllister. I'm the Planning Director for Clackamas County. And the second option that the county could pursue is to take no action at all, and by that I mean, do not pursue any opt-out, and also do not adopt any new land use regulations. And I think it's important that by taking no action, it's actually doing something. And I mean that in the sense that if the county doesn't take any actions on adopting new land use regulations, then as these businesses become licensed and lawful under OLCC regulations and OHA regulations, then the county would be obligated to authorize those under existing land use regulations. So what that means is where growing would be allowed otherwise under the zoning ordinance, and growing for marijuana would be allowed. Where producing or processing would be allowed under the county zoning ordinance, for an example, industrial zoning districts, then processing of marijuana would be allowed. Where retailing is allowed, then retailing would be allowed. And so I think that's an important distinction of taking no action. The county would be required to apply existing land use regulations in House Bill 3400, and there's some sideboards on those regulations. For example, there's limitations on dispensaries. There's limitations on producing, manufacturing, and residential districts. There is a provision that requires the county to allow growing in exclusive farm use districts. And so the county would be obligated to comply with all those existing regulations in House Bill 3400. The county, under this option, the county would still have to amend the existing time, place, and manner ordinance that was adopted by the Board last April that regulates medical and recreational dispensaries. And I would refer to as kind of a conformant amendment. So what happens is, in House Bill 3400, is some of the buffer distances between medical marijuana facilities, the standards for those, excuse me, between medical and recreational facilities were altered, if you will. So the county's going to have to amend the ordinance to kind of deal with those changes in House Bill 3400. The third option is for the county to adopt new land use ordinances that regulate recreational, medical, and recreational marijuana land uses. That is the tract right now that the county is on and proceeding under. We are looking very broadly across the county, both urban and rural zoning districts, on where the appropriate place to site these facilities to allow grow, processing, wholesaling, retailing facilities to exist. Under House Bill 3400, the county has the authority to adopt reasonable regulations for the citing of these types of facilities. And so there are current considerations. You're looking at the location, where's the appropriate place. Location, and that could be defined to certain zoning districts. It also could have location standards on the properties, including setback standards. We're looking at things for like minimum setback requirements, security and security cameras, how do those operate, under what circumstances, evaluating standards for noise, odor control, building size or limitation on building sizes, traffic impacts, access, shared access, an occupancy or residency requirement that if you have one of these licenses, that you live on the property in the rural areas. So there's a number of regulations being considered in the current zoning ordinance Board has directed staff to move forward to have these regulations in place by January 2016. That date is important because in early January, OLCC is required to have rules in place and begin accepting licenses for production, processing, wholesaling, and retailing. The idea is that the county would have those regulations in place by that time in such that a manner that when those licenses are being reviewed and processed, we can ensure they're consistent with the county zoning and development ordinance. The other side of that equation is that as we move forward and do these in December, then it will begin to give property owners and businesses kind of rules to operate under. To date, the Board of County Commissioners have done a number of things related to the marijuana land uses. Last April, they adopted a time, place, manner ordinance, again, for retail, recreational, and medical dispensaries, and that is in place now. That ordinance limits dispensaries to inside the metropolitan urban growth boundary. There's other standards which effectively limit them to commercial zoning districts. There's buffer or separation distances from what are deemed to be sensitive uses, which include schools, public schools, parks, playgrounds, libraries, transit centers, daycare facilities, public housing facilities. All those things are in place today, and we continue, the Planning Division continues to administer that ordinance. At this point in time, the staff has not proposed to make any substantial changes to that ordinance, other to kind of clean up the requirements regarding the separation distances between the dispensers. In July, the Board directed staff to initiate an amendment to the zoning and development ordinance to look at the land use regulations throughout the county and to establish an advisory task force, marijuana task forces stakeholders, to begin kind of some public outreach and discussion and information sharing on marijuana issues. The Board met with the Planning Commission in a joint study session in July, has visited a couple marijuana grow sites in the county, and also continued discussion about marijuana land use issues earlier this month. In September, on September 9, really related to how the Planning Division is going to proceed with outreach Planning Division is going to proceed with outreach and public notice to property owners. Other things that have happened, I mentioned the Marijuana Task Force. It was made up of representatives from the marijuana industry, county public health, community members, CPOs, law enforcement, a couple of Planning Commission members, and then some work from the planning staff and the Public Governmental Affairs staff. The task force met three times in August. I myself would characterize it as beneficial. I think it was very good information sharing, very respectful, and it was a really good chance for the task force to share viewpoints on the matter. Was not planned, but we had an additional task force meeting last Monday, and we agreed, the task force and staff agreed to do that, to roll out the zoning ordinance amendments that were, that staff put together last Thursday. So, we just shared that information to task force, answered questions, began to get feedback from them on certain issues related to the ordinance amendments. Planning Commission again met in July with the Board in a joint work session. Staff also held a study session or work session with the Board with the Planning Commission on August 24th. We had a chance to visit a medical marijuana dispensary on McGloughlin Boulevard last week and kind of learn about those operations. And then, next Monday or Tuesday, excuse me, we met earlier this week with the staff, with the task force. And then, next Tuesday, there's an opportunity for the Planning Commission to visit a production facility, a processing facility, excuse me, in Barlow, processing medical marijuana. So, we'll be doing that next week and hope to get good participation from the Planning Commission.
I'll go see a doctor to try and get some...
Next steps moving forward is the Planning Commission has a study session scheduled on October 12th. And again, that is a meeting between the staff and the Planning Commission. There's no public testimony related for that session, however, the public is invited to attend and listen. And then, the first public hearing before the Planning Commission to really begin considering the amendments in the public forum is scheduled for October 26th. There is a second hearing scheduled, if needed, on November 2nd. So, I encourage you, all of you that are interested in attending the Planning Commission and participating or testifying, it is important that you show up at the October 26th because the November 2nd hearing is needed only if necessary to continue testimony or deliberations by the Planning Commission. Then, following that, and when the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board on the ordinance amendments, there will be a planning session with the Board of County Commissioners on November 10th in this room, and there's no public comment, but the public's invited to attend and listen. And then, the first public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners on the amendments is November 23rd. We do anticipate there will be a second hearing for a final deliberation and decision. However, it is important that if you want to testify, to show up at the November 23rd hearing. Lastly, if you want information, additional information, you can go to this webpage. Our Public Governmental Affairs staff and other planning staff are working diligently to keep this updated, sometimes daily, but there's a lot of information there. You can also go to the government email list and get on email updates related to this. Again, as we move forward, if you want to have specific comments considered for the Planning Commission, you can do it in writing by directing to the person, the planner on that, on the slide there, named Sherry Gilovich. She is, we're asking people to direct those to her, and she's making sure all that information is compiled into the record. You can mail information to Sherry or testify at the Planning Commission or Board of County Commissioner public hearing. And just a reminder, this is not a public, not a land use hearing. We are interested to continue to hear feedback and information about marijuana issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Whoa, they're lighting up like a Christmas tree.
Commissioner Savas.
So, just two questions, Mike. Under the draft regulations, existing approved medical marijuana grow sites under these draft regulations, would they have to comply? If there was an opt-out, would they still be able to exist? Maybe those are two questions in themselves.
Well, and the first one is, do they comply with, what, the new regulations?
Yeah, would they be forced to comply? Let's say, let's say they're in an industrial zone today, and we, the draft regulations say they won't, they're not allowed in industrial zone, they're grandfathered in?
They'd be grandfathered in under existing land use regulations.
So, there's no threat to the pre-existing ones?
Right. And in effect, what they would be, what would happen if they're existing now, lawfully existing, and the county adopted regulations that would no longer allow that use, in effect, they become non-conforming uses. They're allowed to continue, they're allowed to have a change of ownership, they have to continue at the same kind of scale and level of operation as they were when the new regulations were adopted. And if they wanted to alter, change, or expand, they'd be subject to the county's non-conforming use regulations to do a review process.
And the second question I had, there was a, and I'd like to know the date, I don't know the date, but I'd like to get a copy perhaps tonight for anyone who wants one. I'd like to get a fresh one. But we had a letter that we were handing out the permit counter for people that were anticipating, you know, an operation, a grow operation, or whatever it may be. And we had a letter that was somewhat disclaimed that we would be considering regulations. So, I'd like to get a copy of that letter. But you know when that, when that letter was actually first circulated?
That letter has been used for the last maybe six or eight months when property owners or business owners have come in and wanting land use or building permits for really anything associated with marijuana. And in effect, what the letter does is a disclaimer that is put together that I worked in conjunction with county council to just give folks a heads up that you were issuing your permit today because it complies with the existing zoning ordinance. However, the rules are dynamic. OLCC's in rulemaking, OHA's in rulemaking, at that time, the legislature was still in session, forewarning them that the county was also anticipating to adopt land use regulations and that, kind of beware, if you will, because there's a lot of changes, and as well as court cases and litigation and those sort of things. So, it was a disclaimer, sentence or paragraph, and I've been including that on all building permits and land use permits. I don't have it, but I can easily get a copy.
January, February, March, we circulated that? You said six to eight months? I'm just...
I think it was spring sometime.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I could get a copy, maybe after you're done, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Put on our website was ZDO 254, and this was put out by staff. A lot of the commissioners haven't read it yet. I have just now read it. I had a family emergency this week, so I wasn't up on it. But, you know, I used to serve in the legislature, and one of the things that they would say is, one of the worst things to see happen was make a law or make sausage. And we are in a process, and I cannot emphasize enough, this is a process. This is like throwing spaghetti against the wall, seeing what sticks, what doesn't. So, these ZDOs 254, they are not set in stone. And I know there's some angst with some people out there about what's going on, and that's why we're having this discussion and not a hearing. We do have hearings coming up, so please keep an open mind. Certainly, it's okay for you to come forward and say what you like and don't like about this, but none of us have made up our minds on what we're going to do, but we want to hear from people. This is a topic that I will admit I don't know a lot about because I don't like it. I don't partake in marijuana. I voted no against it, but it passed by the citizens. So, now I'm learning. I went on a tour of several grow operations. I will go on a tour of the processing operations to try to learn as much as I can. I will say, I have a very large and broad business and agricultural background, and I'm going to try to apply that experience as we go forward into December and make decisions. When you're a fourth generation farmer, you have to have an open mind, because in farming, there's a lot of things that you can't control that affect whether you, your crop survives or your crop thrives. So, with that in mind, that's how I'm going to look at this.
Commissioner Bernard.
So, I know you don't have answers to this, but this is just something to look for answers. I know this answer, but I'm just going to restate it. There is no such thing as a legal recreational grow, right?
Currently.
Currently, currently, it's not lawful.
So, therefore, there will be no grandfathering of legally recreational grows.
That's correct.
Because they don't exist.
It does not, that's correct. The caveat that the county cannot regulate the personal use and the homegrown provisions that are otherwise provided in the law, which is a certain amount of plants and...
I mentioned this to you earlier today, you know, I think one of the problems about determining whether it's production or processing is whether they're distilling it or whether they're baking it into things. I know you don't know this answer either. So, if I'm baking candy, making candy or baking brownies, I need a commercial license to have a commercial kitchen. And so, that, that kind of information, I'd be interested in. And finally, and you probably don't know this one, I'll bet you nobody does, and that is if a medical dispensary can, October 1st, distribute recreational marijuana, is it therefore grandfathered that they can distribute medical marijuana?
Not medical, recreational.
Not recreational marijuana.
The way that we have, at least in the proposed ZDO right now, and again, we don't need to get too far into the weeds on this, but in the definition section, those activities are specifically, or the recreational retailing is specifically defined as somebody who's obtained a license from OLCC. And until OLCC starts issuing those licenses, nobody would fit under that definition.
Yeah, but October 1st, medical marijuana facilities can distribute recreational marijuana. Therefore, sounds to me like they got a license.
But it's not the, it's not the license as defined in the draft regulations right now. And so, we can flush that out as we go through the ZDO process.
Okay.
But right now, that's been our position.
All right, thank you.
So, going back to the grow operation that's applied for right now, you know, recreation or medical, and they say they're going to stack some cards and they're going to do whatever, and you say that if that establishes itself before we put in rules and regulations, that they're grandfathered, is that correct? Now, it has been said that many of these medical grows will become recreational grows. So, we say, all right, you're grandfathered because you're medical. What happens when they switch over to recreational? Are they still grandfathered?
No. So, what would hap, one of two things I think would have to happen if there's an existing medical grow, a lawful medical grow, and they want to convert to a recreational grow, I think one of two things would have to happen. One, the recreational component of the business would have to comply with the county's new regulations. Or two, they apply to alter, expand, enlarge their existing non-conforming use from a, of a medical grow to a recreational grow. Either one of those would go through a review process.
So, there is a possibility that a medical one could get permitted even though they're not complying with the new regulations, and they, they make a conversion after the regulations go into effect, and they could still be licensed at the same place they were that they wouldn't be able to under perhaps our new rules, is that right?
It's possible. And the reason for that is that the non-conforming use provisions in state law are very prescriptive. And they protect those non-conforming uses, they provide, there's provision for altering, expanding those non-conforming uses. And those, the non-conforming uses provisions are much different than cities, for example. Cities have a lot more discretion in treating and limiting, expansion, or alteration of non-conforming uses. But it's, there are existing provisions that would regulate how those would be evaluated. It does look at whether there's a, any greater adverse impact on the neighborhood and those sort of things. Is there the ability to tie into some of our new regulations? I don't know that yet.
Okay. Commissioner Savas.
So, I have two, I guess, just one spurred by the chair's question. So, on the, on a medical marijuana grow facilities, based on the answer you just provided the chair, if we opt out, they, on recreational, let's say, because we can only opt out on grows there, they cannot do recreational grows, they can only do medical grows, correct?
Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, those would be the only ones that would be legally existing in the county.
Okay. And my main question, which I wanted to ask, was you're warning to us about what we can talk about, not talk about, when it comes to opting out, because that's not part of the regulations as be considered, the draft regulations. We have free rein to discuss that here tonight, correct?
That's correct. Anything that has to do with the ZDO amendments, the package that was published on Monday, that's really what we're primarily concerned about procedurally.
Okay.
All right, we ready to take public testimony, Commissioner? All right, again, I'll call two and then put two on deck. If you agree with the speaker, raise your hand. All right, Sue Thones, I hope that is it, and Scott Phillips. On deck will be Jean Roberts and Rocky Roberts. Now, if you happen to use less than three minutes, God bless you. So, we've got three minutes. And usually, our tendency is here, we let it bleed over a little bit. Sometimes we have one person talking and let them go four or five minutes, but tonight, we're going to have to be pretty tight on that. So, you'll, you'll see the clock in front of you ticking down. Either one of you can start.
Good evening, and thank you all for your service. I wanted to come tonight. I am a current...
Tell us your name and approximately where you live, what city, how's that?
Sue Owens, and I live in unincorporated Oregon City.
Okay.
I represent, I'm a grower with the Oregon Health Authority right now and have a current medical marijuana facility. I wanted to just bring a face to our business in front of the commissioners tonight, and my business was started by my late husband, and I inherited it, so I've learned a lot about it, like you, Tootie, not something I ever, I knew a lot about 10 years ago. And it is a farming business, and the product is wonderful, has wonderful benefits to the medical community. I encourage you all to do a lot of research on it, I have learned a tremendous amount. But as a current property owner, I live right now on agricultural timberland, and I wanted to make sure that you understood that we supported the bill and, before recreational marijuana, with the intention of being able to have the choice of where we were going to participate as producers and growers in the industry, depending upon what the marketplace looked like. And I do not believe that there is that difference between how you produce the product, whether it's going for the medical community or for the recreational consumer. We abide by regulations, we have a lot of care. I run a family farm, I take a lot of pride in what I do. And we want to make sure that we are good corporate citizens. I live on my property. I want to make sure that my neighbors don't have any adverse effects. We have security, both with cameras, sophisticated system. I've had the sheriffs there with false alarms before, walking the property with me. We are very, very careful with waste disposal. We operate under normal business hours, don't have anything that would adversely affect my community, as I said, because I live there and I plan to live here for a long time.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, there's some people in agreement.
Wow.
That's, that's interesting. No, all right, throw it up there. You're next.
My name is Scott Phillips. I actually reside in Portland, but work in Clackamas County in Boring, Oregon. I'm an attorney, and I also grow cannabis. We are medical right now, but we do have plans to expand into recreational. The problem I have primarily is with the draft regulations as written. Our property would not be able to be used in any way for recreational license, part of which is the 100-foot setbacks. We have a very narrow and long property, and we've built according to spec right now, but with 100-foot setbacks, I couldn't even put a hallway down the middle of my property. And we've already expended a great deal of resources in selecting that land and planning build-outs for outdoor greenhouses next year, and now I'm kind of stuck waiting. And I'm sure there are many other people like me who selected land in Clackamas County based on existing zoning regulations who are now kind of stuck, waiting to see what's going to happen. We've expended a great deal of capital, time, blood, sweat, tears, and now we're all just waiting to see what's going to happen. And adding to what the first speaker said, I don't think there's a great deal of difference in the agricultural... in the agricultural process of producing marijuana versus other crops. We have security, we have carbon filters, we know our neighbors. And most of our neighbors also grow cannabis, for that matter. And it's a very neighborly and community-oriented industry. And I would urge all of you to get out there and meet more of us and talk to us, our neighbors, our patients, our staff, and really see what that process is about before we implement these things. Because you're gonna put a lot of smaller farms out of business recreationally if these rules pass as drafted. And the only people left in Clackamas County are gonna be those who can come in and buy a large swath of EFU-zoned land. And that's probably not gonna be local Oregon businesses. It might be out-of-state venture capital, and it's only gonna be a handful of them. So that's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
I might add, quickly, you said we'd put recreational growers out of business. They're not in business yet, so, in fairness.
Supposedly.
Indeed, we do. Alright, Jean Roberts and Rocky Roberts, followed by John Underwood. And we got couples going here tonight, and I think it's Laura Underwood.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Jean Roberts, and I live outside of Sandy, next to the medical marijuana grow and processing site. We agree with you, Commissioner Bernard, that the RRFF5s are all vulnerable neighborhoods. And when it comes to allowing medical marijuana grows and processing as well as recreational grows, processings, and wholesaling. We live in an RRFF5, and we have homes in our area that are from three acres to 20 acres. And there are many places in Clackamas County just like ours. We are all concerned with our personal safety, with the quality of our lives changing, and the concerns of our property value. We feel anywhere in the RRFF5 will be disruptive to the residents, whether it is medical or recreational marijuana. Please keep in mind that it was the 10% of the county that was the urban that carried the 5248 vote for the major 91, not the rural 90%. Letting it be grown in the RRFF5 is putting the voters that did not want this federally illegal drug in the first place have to deal with it in their own backyards. We have had a burglary in our neighborhood just the last couple of weeks, and it has really been upsetting to all of the neighbors there. You mentioned limiting with conditional use permits, but we know that currently, conditional use permit properties are rarely enforced because Clackamas County is a complaint-driven county, and many violations go unattended as well as those that are reported face limit, limited and quick enforcement because Clackamas County code enforcement has only four enforcement officers. I also believe that regulating is important, but I do believe that we need a reality check when we talk about trying to regulate the federally illegal drug, which brings a long list of risks and dangers to our communities. Oregon already produces more marijuana than it uses, and we have been told that 70% of it, of this drug is going out of state. So how are we going to regulate that? Our life-saving has been invested in our property, and the value of this property is now lying in the hands of regulating or revoting. And there may be a balance. But as a rural citizen, I want the right to revote to what will be located next to my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Rocky?
My name is Rocky Roberts, and I live in the Sandy area. Commissioner Loveblow, you are right. Water usage should be a great concern to all of us. Not only how long it's been used, but how it is being accessed. Water supplies throughout the county and state are at great risk. Twenty-five of Oregon's 36 counties are in a drought condition. Most RFF5 properties and RFF10s are supplied from wells. And when their water tables are dramatically drawn down by the pot grows, everyone suffers. Clackamas River Water advises reducing water usage by at least 10%, yet with our increase in pot grows, the opposite is occurring. While some grows are trucking water to their sites, source of that water unknown, others, such as my neighbors, are digging illegal ponds and interrupting the natural water flow. Also, are they paying for the water they're trucking in? And if not, how is that being enforced? This impacts the water flow through my property, which in turn flows into Cedar Creek. With the possible negative impacts of leaching of chemicals the grows use and the amount of potential water usage, thus greatly affects Cedar Creek. Water usage by this drug depends on plant size, canopy size, root level, temperature, and stage of growth. The Emerald Growers Association, by pulling numerous pot growers, developed the basic formula of one gallon of water per one pound of plant per day, if usage. That's a one-to-one-to-one ratio, which means a 10-pound plant would take 10 gallons of water a day, and so on. Then tack on 10 to 20 gallons per plant, depending on the season of growth or the number of harvests and the wasteful water practices. Multiply this by 46,000 grows in Oregon, and as many as 3,500 in Clackamas County, you must agree this is not a matter of small proportions. Though I can appreciate the time that has been invested trying to find solution to this problem, we must remember that marijuana is not a tomato and is still federally illegal. In reality, we know little about this drug and its potential, potential impacts on Clackamas County. Yet we are racing down a road trying to beat a number of deadlines, even before all the facts from OHA and OLCC are in. I believe that it should be the citizens of this county who will be most impacted and decide the final fate of pot growers in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alright, John Underwood, and I think it's Laura, the pen wasn't working too well, followed by Kurt Thies and Phil Chin.
Good evening, County Commissioners. My name is Laura Underwood, and I live outside of Sandy. Commissioner Smith, you've raised some good questions in regards to marijuana processing. I too am concerned, as I live next to a marijuana processing facility, and they are often up till late hours of the night with brilliant lighting streaming from the windows. This removes my sense of security in my community and makes me concerned about what might happen next. As I know from the news that there is a rise in marijuana butane hash oil explosions throughout the nation, and this puts our community at risk. It also makes me concerned, because I've done some research on marijuana processing, and I've found that marijuana flour used in smoking or vaporizing becomes psychoactive when heated. Marijuana smoke contains 50 to 70% more carcinogens than tobacco smoke. Some of the chemicals are ammonia, which increases absorption of the THC and therefore increases addiction. Hydrogen cyanide, a highly poisonous gas or liquid, and formaldehyde, a known human carcinogen, also are used. During concentrate production, the use of chemical solvents such as butane or lighter fluid, isopropanol, alcohol, and ethanol are commonly used during the extraction process. During the extraction process, the cannabis flowers are submerged in these chemical solvents. The cannab- cannabinoids, terpenes, and other active ingredients are dissolved in the liquid or flammable gas. The remaining solid plant materials are filtered out, and the liquid solvent and cannabinoid mixture is purged to remove the solvents, leaving only cannabinoids and other active components of the cannabis plant. The residual solvents can be harmful. It's important to realize that a concentrated extract also contains everything that was soluble in the material that's used. This can also be pesticides or fertilizers sprayed on the plant, resulting in users ingesting massive doses of potentially harmful contaminants. So with the explosive dangers of the types of gas used and all the chemicals involved in processing, and the fact that marijuana is still a federally illegal drug, they don't belong in any of our communities. Therefore, I'm asking our Commissioners to send a referral to the voters and let us decide what any, if we want any more of these dangerous marijuana processing sites in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, County Commissioners. It is my pleasure to be here. My name is John Underwood, and I live outside of Sandy. I am here tonight because I am concerned with allowing a federally illegal drug in my community. I'm concerned because I feel my safety is at risk as I have a marijuana grower and processor next door to me. I have seen how it has disrupted my neighborhood, and it no longer feels peaceful. I have lived here for 21 years. I don't recognize any of the cars that drive up and down our road. I never know who could be knocking at my door. Looking for the grower, as you can see, I can't defend myself. This creates anxiety for me daily. I know we don't have enough law enforcement for our area, and this is a concern for my protection. Being vulnerable is not a nice feeling. Because of my safety, protection, and quality of life, I'm asking our Commissioners to send a referral to the voters and let us decide if we want any more of these marijuana grows in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt Thies and Phil Chin, followed by, who am I gonna, Jerry, don't forgive me on this one. Schwant, oh gracious, what was that? Thank you.
Smelzer.
And Molly, your wife. I'm gonna try to mess that name up again. Alright, Kurt Thies, Phil Chin.
My name is Kurt Thies, so thank you very much.
Phil Chin here, let's make sure. You're gonna pass? Alright, thank you.
Okay, so I wanna certainly thank the Commissioners for taking their time to come out this evening and hear out the community. First off, I am not here to oppose marijuana or the legalization of it or anything to do with that. I would like to speak to the fact of the grow sites. Have you often heard already that a lot of the people here are not happy with where the grow sites are? So because marijuana certainly is a crop, I don't understand why it can't be put out in the exclusive farm uses way outside of communities and all of the complaints or issues that you've just recently heard here. And especially, I would, would really recommend that no industrial property is used for grow sites. And the reason that I say that is because I have a business out in the Boring community, and recently I was looking to expand it. And I was checking out facilities in the area of my location. And Boring does have an industrial park. I went over there because there's a big sign out front there that says, "Buildings for lease." So I went in there and had a conversation with the gentleman, which I assumed was one of the two brothers that owns it. And I was told that there was nothing for lease there, that every one of the buildings were leased out. And it kinda took me by surprise because, I mean, these are huge buildings. I mean, there's, I don't know, three or four of them there that are very large buildings. And I said, "Well, you don't have any space? You don't have," I was looking for like 10,000 square foot, maybe 12, something like that. He goes, "Nope, nope." He said, "It's all leased out, it's all rented." I said, "Really? The whole thing, huh?" He goes, "Yes." I said, "Well," I said, "You don't even have just a little space someplace." And he says, "No," he says, "one person took the whole thing." I said, "Wow. How could that be when there's that many?" It must have been a very major industry that was gonna come into those large buildings. And he said, "Yes, it was going to be marijuana grow facility." Well, the point that I would want to make to you is that if we're going to turn industrial properties into grow sites, it's really going to cause an issue with current businesses or businesses that want to come into those areas and don't have any space in which to either expand into or start a business. And it just seems to me like it's going backwards in allowing a crop to be grown in an industrial park. I mean, a crop should be grown out where crops are grown, and that's in an EFU zone. So that's what I came here to say, so thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry and Molly Schmelzer, well, thank you for those hands.
My name's Jerry Schmelzer. We live in Colton Address. We're halfway between Colton, Ass, Tucata, up in the Elwood District. Kinda shooting from the hip here, because we found out about this about an hour and a half ago, so, or maybe it was earlier today. But anyway, we've got a marijuana grow going on next door to us. And we've been there for 35 years, running a small business there. And they have fans that run 24/7. And we used to be there, you could go outside any night. And it was just, you know, normal, in the wilderness, kind of a atmosphere was quiet. Anyway, so now we don't. We have that, the fans plus the odors and everything else going on. The problem with the grows on this particular one, if they did do it legally, we were never notified. We have no knowledge up until they started clearing land and putting up two big greenhouses. And that was like, I don't know, four months ago at the most. There's no odor control, there's no sound control. And we, I tried, I talked to some of the permit guys to find out if anything had been permitted. And so far, I've not been able to find out if anything was permitted. So it, from the outside looking in and can't get any more information, this is the type of thing that you're gonna be looking at. Evidently, they're gonna just come out, put their greenhouses up, start their process, start using the water, and in production. I'm assuming that they would have, they still have to meet all the standard codes and land use and all the other things would be applicable once everybody knows about them. But we've got one there now running. And per the information, a little bit of information I got today, they're not meeting the codes or the application for odor and sound and this type of thing. So they moved, you know, I don't know, hundreds of yards of dirt to get a flat spot and spent a lot of money and time to get it all compacted, make it look wonderful and all this, and put the greenhouses up. So they spent a lot of dollars to get there. And basically, from my understanding, the neighbors have tried to talk to them, that basically, they don't wanna know or meet us, they just wanna do their thing and to heck with us. And we're just a sore spot on their side, I guess. But the problem is, is we're, my whole property is bordered to them. I got livestock next to them where all this is, air's being blown out. And, and what the effect of that is, I don't know. But I got other neighbors that can't sleep and, and, you know, at night or anything else, or can't go outside and enjoy their back patio just because all this is going on. So these, there's lots of other side effects that happen.
Sure, yes, absolutely. Thank you. All right, it is Gary Schultz and James Schwartz.
Schultz and Schwartz.
Schultz and Schwartz.
That's big.
Either one of you can go first, gentlemen.
I agree, basically agree with Jerry and Molly Schmelzer. I live just across the pasture from them. We can't even open our windows at night or daytime as far as that goes from the sound. Sound is extremely loud.
What's your name?
Pardon?
What is your name?
Gary Schultz, I'm sorry. And we've lived here 36 years, and it's always been, like Jerry said, peaceful and quiet. But, well, you can't, during the heat, we really suffered because we couldn't open our windows to be able to sleep at night. We don't have air conditioning, so that's my situation. I'll cut it short, three minutes, you'll like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, James Schwartz, for the record. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, commissioners. I just, I'm a medical cultivator currently, and wanted to share some, start out with a few main points, why I'm concerned about the current draft proposal for ZDO. In the proposal, you've prohibited cultivation in industrial areas. To reiterate, or to turn this to my personal story, over the last three months, during the time of construction of a proposed recreational facility, my contractors, remodelers, electricians, plumbers, everybody who I've had working in my building, has supported the local economy of Milwaukee with, when I pay them, I see them take their dollars directly and spend it at restaurants, at bars, at shops, directly right in the immediate micro-local economy of the industrial area. And I think by limiting production there, you're limiting economic revenues that come from dollars generated. The second main concern I have with the current ZDO is the conflict with Measure 91 as a whole. Measure 91 was specifically detailed that it would not affect medical grows, but in the current ZDO, there can be no production in industrial zones, and that will be a problem for many patients, because not many patients have access to growers who are on agricultural farming property. And so by limiting the grow to only a personal medical grow or only a personal recreational grow, myself, I can no longer then grow for my three other patients, and that would be a problem for them. They are low-income residents, I provide them their medical cannabis for free, and patients like this will have a difficult time locating a rural farmer grower who's willing to do that for them. Just wanted to touch on public health and safety. We know that alcohol causes 37,000 deaths a year by overdose. There's not one recorded death attributed to cannabis overdose. From a public safety perspective, it's going to be much easier for public safety responders to respond to industrial zones who are, that are much closer into town than rural agricultural zones where it might be half an hour, an hour before you could get a responder out there. And so I think from a public safety perspective, it's easier to protect those industrial zones. I would also agree with some of my fellow speakers here that when you put cannabis production facilities in residential areas, you're going to end up with concerns from residential farmers. And so in an industrial area, I'm secure, there's already industrial equipment running, I'm not creating a nuisance to my other neighbors in that community.
The industrial area you speak of, is that within the city limits of Milwaukee or not?
It is not.
Okay. Commissioner Savas.
Well, I think you almost touched on my point. I just want to say that, clarify from legal staff, that anything the county does only applies to unincorporated Clackamas County and not within any city whatsoever, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's all we have jurisdiction over.
Okay. And that, and again, as we stated earlier, any pre-existing legitimate medical marijuana facilities are not affected or will not be forced to move if they're in industrial today, established legitimately today, medical marijuana grows, correct?
Correct, but I'll qualify that by saying they'd proceed under the grandfathering clauses contained in 3400, which do put some limits on that, but your concept is correct, yes.
Thank you for your question.
Gentlemen, all right, Jerry, thank you for your hands. Jerry Giliari, Shirley Morgan, followed by Ed Mira, David Harry.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm Jerry Giliari from Lake Oswego. Earlier, your first lady that spoke up as a grower and that she was growing out in timber country, I think that's all good and well. But a little-known fact about all of the folks that grow is that you ask any beekeeper what they think about marijuana plants, and they will tell you, Clackamas County is the largest county and we are agricultural. And you get a bee around a marijuana plant, the bee's gonna die. And so if you don't have bees, what have you got left? And that's more serious than I think people realize, those that are growing it, those that think it's great. But the real question is that in an agricultural area, bees are very necessary. Oregon's been known to be very much environmental, the trees, the fish, this, that, and the other thing, but you have to have bees to grow. And these plants kill bees. And so taking all that into account, I think it's a little-known fact, but an extremely very serious one.
Interesting. I had no idea.
No.
I'm gonna look.
Ask any beekeeper.
Bee believers back there.
Bee believers?
Yeah. All right, Shirley, you're up. Okay, okay. All right, you know, we gotta let this proceed, but it sounds like some people have bees and they're kind of okay, so we'll have to do a little research on that, Jerry. Thank you. Shirley.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Shirley Morgan, and I'm from Welchess. As an advocate for public safety, I make it my priority to assure that all citizens are assured of public safety, quality of life, and the protection of their property values in Clackamas County. The infiltration of marijuana throughout our communities has been devastating. In 2013, 242 kids, 18 and under, in our county treatment programs, 70.5% was for marijuana addiction. That means access. Chair Ludlow, you have on many occasions said Clackamas County voters have spoken. Yet Measure 91 in its original form looked much different in its final form, and certainly was not what the voters voted for. Voters were not told that marijuana would be redefined as an agricultural crop and be allowed to be grown in all exclusive farm use areas in full public view without any neighbor notification or conditional use permits. It was the urban voters who voted yes, and it was the rural voters who are being most impacted, and they voted no. Clackamas County is already seeing large industrial complexes being leased in hopes of opening up mega recreational facilities, and our rural residential farming areas are being infiltrated by out-of-state presumptive investors who hope to turn their mega grows into marijuana tourism facilities in the middle of our exclusive farming use areas. This is wrong. Yes, land use restrictions are crucial, but you cannot regain the respect and trust of rural voters if you have neglected to inform and educate them first, because when they find out what's going to befall them under the current land use restrictions, they will once again use their vote to regain their voice in the process. Once you open the door, it's hard to close, and what is permitted will expand. And by using land use restrictions only, rather than a dual-track referral opt-out to the voters, you have opened the door of default to all of the exclusive farm use areas, and you have closed the door on the voices of those who are most impacted. I know this is a difficult position. There is no right place in Clackamas County for a federally illegal drug. Thank you.
Commissioner Savas.
I do have one question for Shirley. I learned today, I think it's accurate, that Marion County is gonna proceed with an opt-out. What jurisdictions in the state are you aware of that are considering that?
We have many jurisdictions in Oregon that are referring to the voters, and I find it very interesting because some of the ones that are referring to the voters in HB 3400 allowed the opt-out of those who voted 55% and up on Measure 91. You, as a jurisdiction, could automatically say no and vote no on six of the categories of recreational marijuana and two of the categories of medical marijuana. So in Madras, as an example, they did do 55%, and they are referring that to the voters because they feel it's extremely important that the voters get to rethink and revote on this topic. So a total count, Commissioner Savas, I'm uncertain, but they're growing, and I'm keeping track of them. Umatilla County, Deschutes County is looking at that option now. They're weighing it. Madras, Toowallington, numerous ones.
I know Sandy is as well.
Sandy, yes, thank you. The one closest to my home, I should remember that one.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley. Ed Mira, David Harry, followed by Garrick Latta and Jeremy Swanland.
I'm used to raising my hand when I come up here. Another venue. Ed Mira, just a citizen. Chair Ludlow and commissioners, thanks for having us here tonight. I just want to say, it sounds, and I'm kind of surprised at this, being from where I'm at, but have been, it sounds as if there are responsible marijuana growers here talking about the filters and all that kind of stuff, but that's not what I'm talking about tonight. I've lived in the rural areas of Clackamas County for over 20 years. Recently, in the past year, the residence at 251 South Elwood Road was sold. Shortly thereafter, significant excavation took place. Jerry talked a little bit about it. He's got more expertise with the removal of land and all that kind of stuff. And two large greenhouses, I estimated, actually I paced them off today, I can't measure because I'm on the other side of the fence, estimated 120 feet by 60 feet, 30 feet tall, were built. There was also a smaller one. At the time, I really wasn't concerned, and then I was told it was going to be a large marijuana grow. The neighbors, and since then, neighbors in this area around this address are subjected to the noise of two large fans, at least four by four in size. I just saw them today, you have the pictures. And two smaller ones. In addition to the, I've seen large amounts of marijuana plants inside, it's huge. And I don't care whether this is recreational or medical, doesn't matter to me that the voters voted for it, it's fine, but I want things taken care of when they're gonna do it. I don't want my area to be contaminated with the noise and the smell. I estimate some of these plants to be 10 feet tall. I commend whoever's growing them. Although I live 300 feet away, I can hear the fans and I can smell the marijuana. And as the plants get bigger, it sometimes is overpowering, depending on which way the wind blows. I've talked with engineers, in fact, I just talked with one yesterday, who told me that they can engineer the smell out and that they are capable of engineering the sound out. In other words, muffling it, they can mitigate it, but it costs money to do that. And of course, this is a profit and greed-oriented business in most cases. So it also appears there's increasing traffic in and out of the residence. How much, I don't know, I can't see the driveway. I simply ask that this body enact rules and regulations that controls the smell, controls the sound, et cetera. And I also want to commend the neighbors that came here tonight. Many of them, they know that there's a lot of money involved, they're concerned for their property, they're concerned for their animals, and they're concerned for their life safety because they came here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. You've got some agreement in the back. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come up testify, be sure to watch the clock. We're really trying to limit that so everybody gets a chance to talk. Yes, sir.
My name is David Harvey. I'm a medical marijuana grower. I am grateful that I will be grandfathered in, and so some of my concerns have been assuaged, but I disagree with the five-acre imposment and the 100-foot imposment. It favors large growers. It tells small farms and small businesses that they won't be allowed to operate, and only the large farms would be allowed to operate. Say, we were in Oklahoma, and they said only a farm 5,000 acres or bigger is a farm now, and all the rest of them have to find some other way to live. Well, they'd go on welfare, and that's what a lot of people are gonna be facing here, you know? They've got their farms ready to go, they made their business plans, they've invested their money, who's gonna compensate them now? I have a complaint about Clackamas County's issue with marijuana. While they are spending money on advertising, which I hear every day about the roads not being funded, where's the money gonna come from? Well, you're turning down a lot of money here that you could be using to fund the roads. Farmers are hard workers. We don't mean to make mistakes, but it sounds like a lot of us are making mistakes, being too loud, being too smelly, and those things can be fixed very easily. So let's make those things that need to be addressed, rather than shutting people down or telling them that they can't set up. Make them set up in a way that is proper. I know how to engineer my grows so that they don't make noise and smell, and I would appreciate other growers doing the same. We've made a lot of improvements to our property since I've been growing legally. I'm not only able to stand up in my community for what I do, but we've put up fencing, wood fencing, we've put up a new barn. I would love to put up a new shop, but I don't have the space that's 100 feet away from my neighbors. So, good job on the people that are here, working to make this a good system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hands up. Thank you. All right. David Harvey, you guys are up there. Hey, how are you? Go ahead.
Good evening, commission. Thanks for having and listening to me this evening. I'd like to start out by...
Tell us who you are.
My name's Garrick Latta. I'm a Clackamas County resident, been living here for the last two years. My biggest problem with the current ZDO proposed changes is the setbacks and basically lumping the medical and the recreational all in one category. So we're basically saying that somebody with two cars or more with 12 plants are gonna have the same restrictions as somebody potentially with a 30,000 square foot grow in an EFU zone. It's gonna really cause a lot of damage to the patients, a lot of patients are gonna lose their growers and their access, and I just, I think that it's an awfully large swoosh of a paintbrush, and those should be looked at maybe two separate categories. The minimum setbacks at 100 feet, I feel like maybe the EFU zones, those are a little bit excessive. I think that a good neighbor plan could be installed to mitigate some of these large setbacks. They could also be solved with allowable easement from neighbors. A good neighbor plan with some kind of a binding mediation process would be nice. If you're in a rural residential grow, or in an ag forest, or forest zone, or EFU, current proposed changes would require carbon filtration. If you don't have a neighbor that's within a half mile or quarter mile, you know, I think that's an expense that could be mitigated. Security cameras, only be pointing towards your own property or towards a public right of way. I know this is referring to the Equestrian Center, and I feel for Mr. Rice and his family. I don't agree with how the Equestrian Center is set up with the security cameras pointing towards houses. I think that clause could be to include some private road access, and if we don't want it pointed at houses... it pointed at houses, let's just say we don't want it pointed at houses. Section, or RFF section, section three, productional shall be entirely located with enclosed one or more buildings. Greenhouse growing is, if you're growing in a greenhouse, typically you plant your plants in the ground in June, and you aren't covering your greenhouses until August. Seems like maybe there could be some verbiage, the plants don't start to stink until August. And I think that could also be mitigated a little bit better. The noise study in the rural residential zones, once again, if there's no neighbors close, I think that's an expense that could also be mitigated. And I'd also like you guys to consider opening up the retail sales outside of the urban growth boundary. There's lots of patients in outlying neighborhoods that could also use access to medicine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Garrick.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Jeremy Swanland. I'm a medical marijuana grower in unincorporated Boring. My issues with the proposed regulations relate mostly to the residential rural restrictions, the lot line, and the acre, or the five-acre minimum lot size. We chose our property because of the zoning, that it was an agricultural, proper place to be. And we, I sympathize with a lot of the people that have spoke here today about bad neighbors. But I think there's ways to address bad neighbors, smells, noises, those types of things, without having to have the lot line adjustment and the minimum acre and the building limitations. Really, what we're talking about is noise and smell and security. And all those things can be addressed without having to restrict, make those other restrictions. I know that's been said, but I just wanted to reiterate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies. Ladies and gentlemen, I can't count that fast, but we have about 20 left. And what we're going to do is, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Pretty prompt on that, too. So I have right now, 7:32. We're going to break till 7:42. All right, ladies and gentlemen, reconvene our evening public discussion, and I'll call forward some other people. They are Douglas Lanfair and Norm Rice, followed by Monica Gunthor? No, thank you. And Amy Margolis. Thank you for that correction. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much for having a, I commend the Board of Commissioners on having a pragmatic discussion on cannabis regulations. I urge the Commissioners to not...
Who are you, sir?
Oh, pardon me. Douglas Lanfair. I have an EFU property out in Malala, and I also have a dispensary over in Beaverton. Again, I commend the county commissioners on taking the approach to have a discussion on this issue, on cannabis reform. I've been involved with cannabis reform for over 18 years. I've been a patient's advocate since 2001, and I've spoken to three states on cannabis reform and continue to lobby our federal government several times a year. To answer Commissioner Bernard's question, the initial statute passed that allows OHA licensed facilities to sell marijuana sunsets out on December 31 of 2016. So they would no longer be permitted under OHA regulations to sell to that. On the bee colony collapse syndrome issue, that's been studied for years. If cannabis was the source of bee colony collapse, it would have been paraded before the public, and, oh my God, we got to get rid of cannabis because it's killing our bees. So that's pure hyperbole and innuendo. So there's no empirical evidence to any bee collapse from cannabis. So the point of making that is that we need to keep our discussions pragmatic and based in reality, not hyperbole. So I would ask that the Commission look at the draft ordinance very carefully, because the initial draft ordinance restricts growing in, production rather, in industrial areas. There's already a lot of industrial sites that are already leased out to established medical grows that, as some of the commissioners have opined on, will ask to be regulated in under OLCC's regulations, once they are promulgated, the rules. So OLCC will also be asking that growers and producers prove where they're getting their water from, how they're impacting their energy use, and other community impact factors as part of the application process. So a lot of that will be vetted through OLCC. That's pretty much all I have to say for now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Got some agreeers out there. All right, Norm.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow and distinguished but often maligned Commissioners. It's hard to walk backwards. Try it. I am Norm Rice, Realtor from Boring, Oregon. Two new listing appointments earlier today shape my thoughts this evening. First one, a 27-year-young professional cyclist racing downhill too fast hits gravel and tragically faces head-on a car, leaving those he loves with only life memories. With no will in place, his family is left with no legal way to protect and enforce his hard-earned investments, including the new home he just purchased but had not even turned the front door key yet. Second one, the listing of a 9.77-acre partial totally smack in the middle of smaller rural residential lots. A perfect example of how the newly drafted ZDO proposal could potentially impact the rural neighborhoods. Those sellers were terrified that a potential marijuana grow site would then affect their neighborhood. They asked me how I could prevent it. In real estate, we examine trends, not to editorialize, but to learn where we may be heading. We all know how difficult it is to reverse trends. Reversing often takes more than just an act of Congress or Commissioners, or even the highest courts. Hopefully, we will not need an explosive disaster such as 9/11, or a high school shooting, or a Clackamas Town Center event, to only then draft hopeful measures to protect our future. It's hard to walk backwards. How can you restore voter confidence or investments beyond campaign rhetoric? Remember that 27-year-old cyclist without a will? Think code enforcement. How do we expect our underfunded and understaffed code enforcement team to possibly deal with what lies before them? Pause and prepare. Once a hole is dug, it's always harder to fill it back up. Once our EFU or timber areas are damaged by clearcutting, they are hard to restore to their time-honored use. Once our industrial landlords experience the high lease payments of the well-funded cannabis industry, how welcoming will they be to the clean industry our county envisioned? Will you give Kurt Thies, who earlier talked here, and his business the confidence to stay within our county? Commissioner Schrader, I believe you had it right when you suggested a dual-track approach. Track one has wisely begun and has been handled quickly, professionally, and diplomatically. A great job. Please, Commissioners, consider initiating track two, the opt-out opportunity, allowing the rural residents of Clackamas County the chance to explore and discover the impact HB 3400 will have upon their life. Try walking backwards to cars tonight. It won't be easy. Thank you, and be safe.
Thank you, Norm. Hands up. Okay. Monica and Amy Margolis, followed by Matt Gentry, Justin Miller. Either one of you.
Okay, thanks. Good evening, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners Bernard, Savas, Smith, and Schrader. My name is Monica Gatner, and I live in Boring. In my job, every single day, I deal with quality of life issues for our seniors in the Portland tri-county area. I see the greed of some family members who much rather see mom or dad, who are no longer able to make their own decisions, pulled out of their homes and placed into the cheapest possible place in order for that family member to try to cash in on a parent's lifelong earnings. With this issue, I can turn to DHS. Where am I going with this? Commissioners, you are the first layer of government for us, the rural population in our county. We totally depend on your intellect and fair judgment for the good of all residing in Clackamas County. Voters have told me over and over again that they thought that Measure 91 was all about medical cannabis, which their mom was able to utilize during her last few months as part of her cancer treatment. More and more grow operations are scattered throughout our rural Clackamas County. It swallows up farmland and light industrial buildings. Big out-of-state money and the greed of some Clackamas County landowners have created chaos for many of us. I totally understand the difficulties you Commissioners are facing to bring about a fair, equitable, and workable solution for all landowners in all zones. Thank you, Commissioners Savas and Schrader, for having taken the time out of your busy schedules to personally check out what we're facing every single day. Chair Ludlow and Commissioner Smith, you are aware of our location, since both of you have visited a couple of years ago on a different matter. Coming from another country, I have the luxury of comparison. If local governments would have and could have listened to their people during the Nazi regime, who knows what would have been prevented? I'm in awe how Oregon's local government can operate by listening to their constituents, no matter which side they're on. My expectations of all of you will be to be the voice of reason for all sides by creating rules and laws that can be enforced with the hiring of additional staff so desperately needed, and/or by opting out in order for you to have the time and energy needed to tackle this complicated issue. Three 150-year-old, 170-foot-high sequoias, still standing today in Eastmoreland, have given me the hope that the value of the Oregon spirit is still alive and well, despite the greed of some. Senators Hatfield and Packwood would be pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. You're next.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Amy Margolis. I'm an attorney with Emerged Law Group. I'm also the Director of the Oregon Cannabis Association. I sat on the 3460 Rulemaking Committee, the Portland Marijuana Task Force. I currently sit on the OLCC Licensing Compliance and Regulation Committee, and I also sat on the task force created to make recommendations to this committee. So I had the opportunity to meet many of you as we went on a tour of marijuana grow sites, and I appreciate all of you being willing to come on those tours. Our firm represents many landlords and commercial property owners in this space. My husband also happens to be a commercial broker who handles these types of transactions, so I think I'm uniquely equipped to discuss the proposed ban on particularly industrial cultivation. I would like to say that I have a lot of things to say, but I'm going to focus just on this one issue and then reach out to all of you individually and testify at some of the public opportunities after this.
Come a little closer to the mic, Amy.
Sorry about that. Does that cut into my time? So...
Mary?
Oh, God!
I think you used a minute. Let's call it a minute. There was an operator error.
I don't think so. I have seven minutes left. So I am urging the Commission to reconsider, in particular, the ban on industrial cultivation for the following reasons. Indoor cultivation in industrial zones benefits all parties. The county benefits because otherwise vacant property finds good tenants. Cannabis tenants typically upgrade the property, care for the building, and pay rent at the top of the market. Landlords benefit by finding good tenants who are invested in the location. Additionally, the county benefits through the local tax component of House Bill 3400 by having occupied buildings and increased employment. All of these things inject revenue into Clackamas County. This conclusion does not represent, I want to be very clear, to ban industrial cultivation does not represent the conclusion we came to during the task force meetings. The outright ban, from my legal perspective, is unlawful and goes beyond reasonable regulation as required by the statute. This Commission will be left explaining to landlords why they will need to evict tenants from buildings where the use was previously consistent with similar allowed uses, why those landlords will need to give up rent, reimburse tenants for prepaid rent, and be left with vacant spaces. This county should also be prepared to defend against serious and viable lawsuits from our clients, and there are many attorneys in this audience, from our clients and many other clients. This policy serves no public safety goals, and indoor cultivation facilities will be, as required by OLCC, secured, monitored, and heavily regulated. My recommendation would be to choose Option 2, as presented by Mr. McAllister. However, I understand that is extremely unlikely. Because I recognize that I would instead ask that the Commission make reasonable regulations for all types of uses, be consistent with the existing land use rules in Clackamas County. Thank you.
I just love it when you get threatened by attorneys. It just makes my day.
I heard some other veiled threats.
Not by me. Commissioner Savas.
So I just, I just want to kind of address Amy a little bit, or some of her comments. So we had a great discussion on the phone this morning, because we played phone tag until we got together today from yesterday. But I, my concern really, and you touched on it, Amy, my concern about this is that the test of reasonableness will be a factor here going forward, and, which compels me really to really consider the, a two-track mode for Clackamas County. One being pursue the regulations by going, the second track being the opt-out buys us more time to better craft those regulations that will pass the muster of the reasonable test. And also, we can watch what other jurisdictions do and how they fare with these regulations. My concern is that some of the points you raise may not prevail, that the legal community will probably have good standing to challenge a lot of these regulations, and we end up with nothing. So I think that, the other thing here I learned tonight I thought was fascinating, and was pointed out by two of the speakers, was that, and looking at the precinct numbers, I know it's true, that the urban part of the county voted for this, and the rural part of the county voted against it. And the way it's currently crafted, the rural part of the community will have the biggest impact as far as the growers are concerned. And it's my opinion, and a lot of people that I've talked to, that people who voted for Measure 91 were really voting for the recreational use, and I, to some degree, that's what I think it's all about, and maybe reasonably that they were voting for the access to buy it and buy it legally and legitimately. So I appreciate all the legitimate operators that are here tonight. But I do want to say that I have trouble with three factors of what we're, the track we're on. The track we're on right now is, we're going to tax. We're going to participate in a tax. I got an issue with that. And the tax is not enough to make up for all the administration, the code enforcement, and all the other regs that are going to come with this, the legal challenges. So I have an issue with that. I have an issue with the regulation that we, you know, we're regulating even further, and these will be tested. And so we're taxing, we're regulating, and we're going to end up litigating. And I think those are going to cost the county taxpayers a lot of money, and in time that we can't afford. So that's why I think the two-track mode is, number one, buys us more time to better craft, because as you and I both discussed today, we have such a limited timeframe to craft this and to consider all this, and it's just too compressed. So it gives us more time to be thoughtful about it, and also gives the voters an option to, an opportunity to do what the legislature had, really gave us the opportunity for, an opportunity to opt-out. I know you don't agree with that. So, in all fairness said, you didn't agree with the opt-out piece, but that's why, I think, because I think you're right. I think you have, I think the legal community has an opportunity to challenge a lot of what's in our proposed regulations, and I think you'll prevail on a number of them.
We also have a limited time to listen to the rest of the people that have their cards in. So back to the listening phase. Matt Gentry?
I was part of the discussion phase.
Justin Miller? Whatever.
I'm going to pass.
Justin Miller, is that you? Justin Miller's passing. Okay, and then I'll call up then, oh, boy, last name C-O-O-P something, Corey, is it? All right, Corey, come on forward. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Matthew Gentry. I'm the owner and co-founder of Jolly Greens. We manufacture cannabis-infused edible for the medical marijuana market. I'm also a member of the Oregon Cannabis Business Council, and I've sat on the OLCC Subcommittee for Recreational Cannabis Packaging. You know, there's bad apples in every bunch, and some people have brought up some things with regard to grows around them, and I think, you know, those things are not to be confused with the norm. I think it's very clear that there's still a great misunderstanding related to cannabis, and that people are involved with it. All misconceptions stemming from decades of old propaganda tactics implemented by our government, and it's a testament to how pervasive and effective it can be. Claims that cannabis causes a reduction in property value are completely speculative. Claims that cannabis causes a reduction in property value are completely speculative. In fact, I'd venture to guess it will do the opposite, as producers and growers will be investing great amounts of money into the properties they occupy. If you're concerned, if anybody's concerned with water here, they need to look at your livestock producers and the crops used to feed those livestock, the amount of animal waste running into waterways, and the chemicals produced by other genetically-modified crops in Clackamas County that encourage overuse of pesticides. Nobody's stomping their feet when a vineyard clears a huge lot of land either. There's no reason to believe cannabis will have any more of an adverse effect on the environment than other permitted crops. In fact, hemp production could have just the opposite effect, and it's an incredibly sustainable crop, especially in relation to pulp and paper. The solvent processes people have brought up are all borrowed from other botanical industries. The use of butane, propane, and hexane for plant extraction are nothing new. The new bills regulate and put very strict provisions on those seeking licensing for these facilities, including explosion-proof rooms. I don't think anybody here would object to a lavender oil extraction or other essential oil-based business. Cannabis is no different than any other plant extraction process. Bad media has done a good job of forming an unjust vision of the process in people's mind, and those people that do so after these regulations will be prosecuted accordingly. I guarantee that there's many people that have lived next to grow sites, legal or not, throughout the last decades and never had any idea they were there. There's ways to properly regulate a grow with regard to sound and smell. Indoors grows are capable of producing high-quality cannabis for the medical community. With that said, there's no reason to prohibit growing on Farm Forestry 10 or Farm Forestry 5 or any other rural residential, residentially-zoned property. Most of these lots are near livestock facilities and other things that produce far more disruption to their local environment, such as smell and waste pollution. Traffic described as related to normal customary business, and there's no reason to believe that anything unscrupulous or criminal is taking place. Breaking into a rural farm forestry property is going to be incredibly risky and less of a concern than an urban establishment.
You can use some of my time. I like what you're saying.
Bees, claims that bees are completely unfounded have no scientific...
I'm not going to get past around time, so we're going to have to finish this up.
The industry needs to be fostered and embraced, and it would be unwise to put unreasonable or harsh limitations on these businesses. We need to create an environment that fosters small, local Oregon businesses such as myself...
Okay, I've given you more than anybody else yet, so your time really is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. There you go. Got a lot of agreeers, though. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I'm just, my name is Corey Cooper. We're sitting on 10 acres up by Estacada. I would advocate for the inclusion of RR5. I think with the, when you guys are looking at the 5,000 square foot, what do you call it, cap limit for recreational growers, when you're sitting on five, over five acres, that's way more than enough to like, have, to meet all those requirements of, of regulation. So, I would think that all those regulations, like, let us, good policy, I feel like, will let us try to meet those regulations as opposed to say, you can't participate in this because we want to quote, like, save the rural residential zone property, you know? So, that's my piece. Oh, and then also, the, the whole idea that we couldn't have production, I mean, processing on the facility, I think in one of those discussions, it was like unclear, but it's not really feasible to think that all the product, or all the processing would have to go someplace else and that we couldn't use part of our whole 10 acres to do something safely with the, according to the regulations that are set in place.
Okay. Thank you. Daniel Safer. Vincent Sonoski? Followed by Noah Stokes? And Angela Kershey? I'm botching the names, I'm sure. Printing? All right, either one of you can go first.
My name's Daniel Safer. I'm out in Estacada. I would just like to put in my opinion for rural residential areas, not all of them, like was mentioned earlier, are surrounded by smaller rural residential farms. I myself am surrounded by larger properties. I think that the big thing for me would be the inclusion of processing. I think that there are a lot of different types of processing that kind of sets itself apart. There's a big difference between a flammable gas and an edible manufacturer or processor. I also just want to say that from a business perspective, it's, I mean, good practice to do your processing onsite. It adds costs to have to transport to somebody else or to use a third party as opposed to having it onsite. That's, that's my piece.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Got some agreement?
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. My name's Vince Slawaski. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Harris-Moore. I represent several marijuana businesses here in Clackamas County, including a longtime medical marijuana grower who's here with me today. That's Mr. Andy Whites. And he's there in the back. I'd like to start out by saying that, you know, as has been emphasized tonight, a lot of the people who want to get into this industry on the recreational side are used to compliance, they're used to regulations, and they want to be good community members. So, we're hopeful that we can get to a good point with these regulations. Having said that, there are a few portions of the regulations that I feel are problematic, and I'd like to discuss briefly today. First of them are the relatively restrictive draft zoning provisions in the RR FF5 and FF10 zoning districts. They're at 841.03A in the draft ordinances. The first one is that a production site may be at a maximum of 5,000 square feet. Now, that's a lot smaller than, obviously, the Colorado cultivation limits. It's significantly smaller than Tier 3 Washington licenses. It's smaller than Tier 2 Washington licenses. It's awfully small. And that, that, that size is problematic also to the extent that some of these people, like Mr. Whites, have been approved by the county in certain areas for this use, and they've been approved at a larger property. And now, the county's saying, well, maybe we're only going to allow you to grow at 5,000 square feet. Second issue that I have that's been touched on by, I think, two people tonight is the 100-foot setback requirement. Mr. Savas had talked a little bit with Ms. Margolis about the possibility of litigation on these issues. That's, that's one of those things that could be litigated. I mean, that's, I could see somebody arguing that that's a taking, and it is going to render a lot of properties, again, that have been pre-approved by the county for these sorts of uses as unusable. As to processing, I've heard a few concerns about environmental safety and then things like that, and those are legitimate concerns, but as has been emphasized, these are closed-loop systems. These are people that are going to have to now come into compliance with all sorts of local rules, and we don't expect to have explosions and things like what happens with 17-year-old kids in garages. As far as the environmental impacts of it, you know, this is a, what you end up with is just the leaf, and you can recycle that or do anything with it, so I don't feel that we should be concerned that this is going to be a big pollutant. Again, these are closed-loop systems. That's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Noah Stokes and Angela Kershey? Followed by John Seligu? And John Ferramella? Either one of you?
Hey, I'm Angela Kopshai. You were close. Thank you for your time, and I'm not an attorney. I, I'm a, I'm a neurologic music therapist. I live in Clackamas County, and I'm actually here on behalf of my clients. So, I worked at Emmanuel and Dorn Becker for the Children's Cancer Association, and then I opened a private practice, and we specialize in children with autism and epilepsy and Down Syndrome. And they, I would say, not everyone, but medical marijuana comes up a lot in our conversations, and they would be in support of pretty much everything Amy said tonight. And the most important things that they want to see, and, you know, they're not here tonight, most of them, because of their own fear of condemnation, but they would want to see greater access to alternative medication, and the sooner we can open the door and get over the sensationalized reefer madness history, the better, and we can get more research and no more fear-based sensationalism. I already said that. So, and so the three things that we would encourage are, there's Dope Magazine, their latest publication has an article about a little girl named Roar, who I worked with at Emmanuel, and her, her mom was brave enough to actually put a face to people who are using medical marijuana with their children. So, check that out if you have a chance. It's a great article. The documentary, Charlotte's Web, if you haven't seen it already, can YouTube that. And then I wanted to share one story of a woman named Jody, who has a 20-year-old who has epilepsy and autism, and she didn't sleep, these are her words, she did not sleep for 20 years. She slept, she never got a full night's sleep, until she used a particular strain of CBD and a tiny bit of THC, and her son actually slept through the night, and she just wanted to share that with you. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. You know, you've got a lot of hands. Yes?
Well, thank you, everybody. My name is Noah Stokes. I actually own Canadgar Security. So, I own OmniGuard Security, which is a residential and commercial security firm doing electronic security systems, and about a year ago, developed Canadgar Security as we saw the need for these highly-regulated facilities in Washington. We're based in Lake Oswego, so we have a somewhat unique perspective on this because our clients come to us only because it's regulated and has created a need due to the regulation that's, that's out there for a very high level of a security system. And so, I think a lot of the, the fears that many people have voiced today, in my experience, working with hundreds of licensed facilities and licensees in Oregon and Washington, are based on the existing and currently unregulated grows and, and the lightly or basically unregulated medical grows. I, I am not a cannabis user. I, I have very little experience with it. I have three daughters, an eight-month-old, a two-and-a-half-year-old, and a four-and-a-half-year-old. I'm very tired. But people ask me all the time how I feel about cannabis and regulation and, you know, recreational cannabis, and I'm not blind, and I'm not ignorant to the fact that cannabis exists out there, all over the country, massively unregulated. The funds go wherever it needs to go, and so, trying to prevent the regulation of having inspectors and security systems and seed-to-sale tracking and lab testing as opposed to people that are, you know, honestly, giving, giving the community, giving the industry a bad name by loud fans and smelly grows that would be prevented and would be allowed to be regulated through these, these types of meetings and allowing the people that are applying for these licenses want to know what inbounds looks like, and they're willing to pay money and go through a lot of hoops to do that because their only alternative is to grow illegally or to not grow, but that's not really what's happening. They're, they're growing, or people are growing if we give them an outlet to do that and give them what inbounds look like so that neighbors are not being disturbed by that process. That's really what they want. They spend a lot of money on systems. I have clients in this room that spend a lot of money to protect their facilities, and I guarantee you, they're way more secure than probably any other business in these different counties and cities. Nobody's attacking those. Nobody's pursuing them. Nobody's getting anywhere close to them because they have regulation, and people that don't even have regulation have these security systems in there just for the heck of it, just to be secure. So, I would say, allow them to operate businesses as good, responsible business owners in this county. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I do have a question, sir. This, on the security thing, it's not required for grow operations to have cameras, correct?
Not gross.
Not gross. It's not required to have cameras, so it's kind of self-evident that the growers feel they need to protect it, so they're not afraid of the neighbors, obviously. They're probably afraid of someone breaking into the facility for the cash or for, for the cash crop or a crop that could be converted to cash, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely. This is, it's an all-cash business. You can't exactly go to the police very easily, and it's very uncommon, when you say, hey, I had this pile of cash over here, and I had a big pile of marijuana over here, and somebody took it. If you find any, can you let me know, and I'll let you know if that's, that's my pile of cash marijuana? It's, and so, you know, banking is another big thing for me, allowing banking services. But my clients have never had a successful attempt on any of their facilities, like I would. People avoid them. There's so many unregulated, unsecured facilities everywhere. That's the easy target. They're not going to call the police. They really don't have that. A regulated facility, they have to call the police. They have to tell the authorities. They have to pursue that. They have to view the video cameras. They have to pursue those criminals, and therefore, those businesses are not pursued. And in industrial areas is a big thing for me. I think they should be in industrial areas because I don't know if you ever tried to put a security system on a five-acre plot of land.
Are we not? Because we're pretty much done with that one.
You got my question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, we've got, and I always apologize for this pronunciation, John Seligu and John Ferramella? You guys can straighten me out.
Salig.
Shane McKee. What's that again?
John Salig.
Thank you. Shane McKee is on deck.
Yeah, I think I'm...
Come a little closer to the microphone.
I'm the poster child for why we're here. 15 years ago...
Give us your name, please.
John Salig.
Oh, thank you.
15 years ago, we bought our property, began our home, and our horses. Now, the barn across the street is a marijuana grow of the future. He's paved out a 30,000-square-foot barn. At this time, he can produce, as I understand it, 24 plants legally for medical marijuana. Obviously, it's a hope for the future on his part. It's going to greatly impact my lifestyle. He's blocked access to a trail that used to lead there to go to BLM land, and it only seeks to benefit him. We are a rural county. That's why we moved there. That's why everyone in my neighborhood moved there. There's no streetlights. It's what we like. And now, for the basis of him, our neighborhood is about to change. It's going to become an industrial grow, not a farm use. It's industrial. It's indoors. It's chemically sponsored. It doesn't grow in the ground. It's not just a matter of fertilizer. If it's hydroponic, there's all kinds of waste products, and we have enough problem with dumpsters in the community already, and now we are going to ensure another project that's going to have a significant amount of waste that has to be cycled. If it's in planters, the potting soil has to be recycled, the chemicals contained in it have to go somewhere. There's no regulation of any of this stuff. There is no body to oversee it. He's gotten permits to pave his barn, but there's no one that's looked at his driveway, which isn't properly situated. The way the sediment has gone, it now drains across the street into my property, and even though the county has been there to visit and regulate his construction, the different offices don't look one over the other. Talk about the OLCC regulating and having initial requirements, but who's going to follow up to see to it that these growers continue to meet them? This has traditionally been a cash business populated by people who are on the edge of legality. There's no reason to expect that they're going to become good corporate citizens. The point of the business being cash, you don't pay taxes. You pay people in cash. There's no records, and the money goes to your pocket, and you find a way to invest it, as my neighbor has, $100,000 to pave his barn. Where'd that kind of cash come from in a startup on a questionable business? There's no bank that was going to lend that because the banks won't be active in it. It's currently legal in the state of Oregon, but federal law trumps state law in many cases, and it's not currently legal, and for the county to hang their hat on the idea of tax revenues, Commissioner Savas, I'm glad what you said. The fact is, the expenses are going to outstrip the profits. It's not going to be an asset to the community, and it's going to change lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is John Ferranola. I live in Portland. I appreciate the opportunity, and for you guys listening to us as well. I won't spend much time on, on the industrial idea, other than the fact that I live industrial, and I voted for industrial, and I want it in industrial, so I just throw that in there. I hear these issues like smell or security as real problems in the cannabis industry, but these are issues that also exist in other businesses. Breweries, for example, nurseries, bakeries, restaurants, bars. It seems like this is, cannabis is a little more emotional than logical when we're approaching it from a, a security issue. Some issue about the security, you know, the cameras that may be in a facility certainly prepare you for outside threat, but also protect the employer from inside threat, sabotage of your, your crops, or, you know, people stealing from you from within. or, um, you know, people stealing from you from within. So, um, you know, that the idea of security here doesn't necessarily mean it's bringing crime from outside, sometimes there, there's crime inside as well. It seems like the language used in the businesses for, you know, breweries and nurseries and bakeries and so on would be the same language, would make sense to be the same language that we're using in, in the cannabis industry, um, rather than creating new ones. It just seems like, why recreate the wheel? Uh, it's, it's, uh, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. And Shane McKee, and that's the last card I have.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Shane McKee, and for the last forty-three of forty-six years, I've resided in Boring in Damascus. I'm the co-founder of Oregon Compassion Solutions, I currently have a facility in an industrial area, and I had intentions of speaking shortly about that and letting you all go home. A couple of things that I've heard a few people say, and I very much so sympathize with some of these folks in the residential areas that have concerns and unfortunately do have some bad neighbors. Uh, we're a zero-discharge facility, we filter all of our water, we use eighty-five percent of it. Uh, we don't use any pesticides that would be harmful to bees in any way. We use all organic fertilizers, and there's zero waste that leaves our facility. So, these can be accomplished, uh, and I believe that through regulation, that you have an opportunity here, rather than choosing to opt out, which is probably a short-term solution, to regulate and create, uh, parameters that, uh, would address many of the concerns here. It's my understanding that some, there may be some concern that in the industrial areas that we don't employ enough people, game compared to some of our neighbors. Our facility is nine thousand square feet, and we have twenty-seven employees. Twelve of those are minimum-wage jobs, part-time jobs, fifteen of those are, uh, living-wage jobs, good jobs that we create for people. My landlord has fifteen thousand square feet and employs seven people. Uh, the third building within our industrial park employs four people and has twelve thousand square feet. So, uh, we employ about six times as many people as they do. Um, I don't care to disclose the location out of respect to my neighbors. Um, you know, it's not so much that I'm looking to hide, but, uh, we're very considerate of our neighbors and their businesses and their ability to conduct business without having a, uh, without being looked upon, it's bad, it's a place where they wouldn't want to do business from their customers. So, um, I hope that you guys consider industrial use, I believe that, uh, you look at a concrete tilt-up, you think of a secure facility, you think of adequate parking, um, you think of adequate power supply that's already there, you think of lack of folks that may be very close to residential areas. Uh, I'm in an industrial area down off of Two Twelve by Fred Meyer Warehouse, where there are no residences. Um, I have many neighbors that are cannabis companies. I think somebody had mentioned earlier that there would be a lot of vacancies, I can vouch for that. Um, I know a lot of landlords that would lose good tenants that have been there for years, that they'd enjoyed having as tenants and would like to continue having as tenants. So, I hope that you would consider some of those industrial areas. I'm not exactly certain of, of why you've shied away from them so bad, but, listening to some of the concerns from the folks here, I would think it would encourage you to look at those industrial areas, um, and take some of that burden away possibly from some of these smaller, uh, rural areas, and put it in an industrial area where there aren't schools, there's not residences, and there is adequate power. Thank you.
Thank you. Got some agreement with that? I'm going to close the public portion of the public discussion, and Commissioner Bernard?
So, I had a couple of questions. Right now, the regulation we're looking at, um, talks about the size of the structure. Is it ten thousand or five thousand? I can't, after all the things I've heard tonight, I'm a little bit confused, but I'll look at it again. So, let's say I own three buildings. I'm just doing kind of a scenario, one's ten thousand, one's twenty thousand, one's five thousand. Uh, on, on one lot, um, can each one of those buildings be a grow facility?
In a rural residential district?
Uh, thank you.
In a rural residential district is where the building limitation is proposed at this time. And it is five thousand square feet, and...
Now, understand this is-
It's a maximum, it's a maximum of five feet, five thousand square feet of building area.
Oh, so-
Maximum.
On a lot?
That's correct.
Because in RRFF five or twenty, you know, it's not easy, and it, it, I don't think it's impossible to divide it into lots unless it's brought into the UGB, correct?
RFF five?
Yeah.
Property?
Yeah.
It's a five-acre lot size, so it's divisible as long as, uh, you create, you're, all your new lots created are five acres.
Yeah. Well, a five acre, you only have five acres, you can't create five, five acres.
Right, there, but there may be lots, there may be lots in that zoning district that are larger than five.
Yeah, twenty, my neighbor has a thirteen acres and has two lots. So, in theory, you could put a five thousand or ten thousand-foot structure in each lot.
Five, I think.
Five thousand square foot. So, so, I mean, that's just one, the fan noise, you know, this, for one thing, the square footage of this is illegal, from what I can tell.
Now, we, we're talking about proposed regulations that we don't have in place here.
Right.
So, this, this obviously is an agricultural usage, I think it's a medical marijuana grow. I think they've stacked cards, and I don't know at all that it's illegal, Mike, you got an opinion on that?
But I thought the mara, medical marijuana, you can only grow so many plants, no matter what.
You can stack cards into, into the heavens.
Oh, okay, so, okay, so then that kind of answers that. The fan thing-
There'll be some limits on that for the medical under the new regulations.
Okay.
State regulations.
Yes.
The fa, the fan issue, I mean, those are massive fans, it's got to be something we can do something about. You know, I don't, and the other thing is that you really can't have a grow facility unless you have water, water rights, or you're connected to city water, which is very unlikely in a rural area. Uh, my neighbor, who has a huge dairy farm, he, he has water rights, he's got pipes everywhere. He could grow marijuana all over the place. But, so, the, the concern about how big you could grow it, I mean, on a rural area, let's say my lot, it's five, five, about six acres. I, I really couldn't do a marijuana facility there, even if I wanted to, because I'm on a well. I don't have water rights, right?
That's very likely, yes.
Okay, my neighbor's the same, he has thirteen acres, and probably most of my neighbors are very similar. They don't have water rights, they have a well. I know my neighbors across the street, just about everyone around me is all on well, except for the big cattle ranch down the road, that looks like he has everybody's water rights. So, you know, I, I am concerned a little bit about the RRFF five setbacks maybe being too big. But, I'll tell you, tomorrow, a hog farm could come in next door and start a hog farm five feet from your house, if your fence line's right there, or ten feet, whatever the distance is, which would be so much worse than a marijuana grow. Uh, so, I mean, it's, it's very concerning, I know somebody that actually happened to. They built a hog farm right next to their house, thousands of hogs. So, the other thing, a little concern is, is a sprinkler. Uh, could we require sprinklers in the, I heard an explosive-proof room for processing, could you require sprinklers?
Uh, the, to the extent there's processing, uh, in a building, that will be regulated under the building code. And it will depend on the size of the, of a number of factors, I have no expertise in building code, but, but when processing comes in, it's going to look at the size of the building, what type of, uh, facilities are being used for processing, is there a chemical, is there hazardous chemicals, what quantities, et cetera, it's all regulated by the building code. And in some cases, perhaps the fire code. So, the answer to your question is, um, the building code or the fire code could require that, where it's warranted based on what's happening in the building.
Okay. So, one, one of the comments made tonight, I just got to respond to, and that's, you know, people investing a whole lot of money in these facilities ahead of legal, of it being legal, that's your own risk. And if an investor did that, I can't believe somebody's that, would do that, but, you know, I, I disagree with not allowing it in industrial, I think we have to limit the size. But, it seems to me, after hearing all these people talk, it's almost the area that makes the most sense, rather than the area we shouldn't be doing it. I mean, frankly, I'd rather have it in an industrial zone, we talk about, uh, you know, recycling facilities, um, you know, where they really belong, they, and we're really challenged with that, but this is a little different issue. It seems to me an industrial zone would solve a lot of problems for folks out there, rather than putting that burden on people in the rural community. Have you approved any, uh, recreational marijuana grows?
No.
Because somebody else said that, you know, that, you know, you've approved them and now you're going to take it away. I just think we need to note that that's not true.
That's correct.
And you have a letter that sits on the desk and says, you know, warns people of such. You know, the other thing we do is, you know, if you didn't vote for me, or you didn't vote for this issue, you weren't educated. And, but, if you voted for me, and you voted yes on this issue, you were educated. Which one is it? I mean, you gotta take some responsibility for knowing what you're voting on. And I, I think, to assume the voters are idiots by saying they didn't know what they voted on, I just can't accept that. I take responsibility of reading, that's why I voted no. And, um, I read the paper, which had numerous articles about the issue, and I read the voters, what the voter comments were, lots of information, you gotta take some responsibility. And finally, marijuana is not a cash business. I watched a show the other night, Visa, MasterCard, uh, and then PayPal takes payments. Uh, I saw a show, they had a Visa, MasterCard right there, Maritime Cafe. Now, is the bank going to question whether that's a cafe? I mean, if they serve brownies, aren't they a cafe? So, why couldn't they take Visa? So, it is not all strictly cash, um, but it sure, you know, I, certainly, cash is a challenge, but Visa, MasterCard is accepted as well as, is some of those other way, PayPal.
Well, there for a while, Jim, you had people were going to raise their hands, but I don't see any now. So, um-
I wore them all out.
You finished them off with that last one.
I'm not sure I addressed them all, but I'll let it go.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, I just want to, uh, number one, answer the question is, why, why is the commission, uh, in these regulations directing staff not to have language to allow grows and processing in industrial areas? And it's kind of surprising to me that here Commissioner Bernard not mentioned why, I think he knows why. Number one, it's our goal in Clackamas County to get more industrial land, because of all the counties we know of in the state, Clackamas County has the least amount of industrial land, uh, today, and actually, we are, have spent a significant amount of money and time trying, which is trying to work with the state and Metro, and DLCD, and the legislature to try to get more industrial land identified. We have a major shortage, and we have businesses in Clackamas County that want to expand, that can't even expand into larger operations, so, the smaller sites, if it's a five thousand square foot industrial site, not, that's not something that we're necessarily have a concern about. Um, but, it's really the larger, the larger properties, and this board voted unanimously to, uh, include that as one of the, one of our board goals, is to get more employment, more industrial land, and we have specifics. So, we spent a lot of time, so it, it strikes me very odd that, that would, uh, that would not be something that Commissioner Bernard would share, but it's important to us, so, that's, I think that is the rationale, that's the issue to the last speaker who, and others who kind of mentioned, you know, why? Why not industrial, and that's the answer. Uh, the other thing I think I was struck here by tonight was the camera, the camera issue. Obviously, they want to protect their facilities and they're worried about theft, and one gentleman mentioned maybe internal theft. Um, but, uh, one constituent out in rural Clackamas County said, you know, I, I had my barn broken into, and, um, they didn't take a thing. And, uh, what he realized was, um, from people driving around in his neighborhood, because at night it's very hard to read addresses and know where you're going, is they were looking for the marijuana grow across the road. Um, he's, he thinks that, he's just speculating, but, think about how unsafe some of those people feel that are in the houses, they don't have cameras, uh, they don't have all this technology, and someone mistakenly pulls up in their driveway and breaks into their home or their, their barn, which is, I think, this gentleman speculating is what happened to his. So, I, I'm struck by the fact that there'd be internal theft, but being a small business owner, I guess that's really not too surprising at all, but it just kind of shows that that is an issue uh, in, in the minds of the people who run these operations, or else they wouldn't want cameras or ever thought of cameras, so, that's what I have for this evening.
All right, Commissioner Smith?
I have about three things I'll say briefly, because I know it's late. I'm going to reiterate what I'd said in the beginning of this meeting, is nothing has been decided. So, anything that was proposed from staff, a lot of people say a lot of things, but we haven't taken any official votes on, on that yet, and this is a work in progress. Number two, to say that we can't have marijuana in an industrial site, to me, is highly discriminatory. I mean, it, the vote is legal, for us to say that the marijuana folks aren't good enough, or that they don't have the right kind of mojo to run a business, or they don't have the right type of scientific expertise, is very discriminatory. Like I say, I, I don't like this type of business, but obviously, from what I, the research I've done, and the operations I've seen, these folks know what they're doing, they really do. And lastly, um, there's been an argument made that I think is hysterical, and I won't buy into, and that is, it is not our responsibility as government to protect people from speculative investments when they go out and buy properties before the rules were set. If that were so, the federal government would protect investors from downs in the stock market. So, don't think that we're going to go out and, and grandfather places in that, um, don't fit the criteria. I understand five-acre lots can be configured in any way. If you have a very long, narrow lot that you bought with the building on it, and oh geez, the hundred-feet boundary is too much, that was speculation on your part. The reason why for the hundred-foot boundaries is because of all of the issues that we heard tonight. The noise, the light, and the odor, and it sounds like to me that there are enough marijuana grows around who are violating people's sensitivities in that area. So, if you don't want us to enforce the hundred-foot lot lines, then be sensitive to your neighbors. This is what it's all about, it's about people agreeing and coming together whether you like it or not. And there's also this good neighbor thing that's floated around. You know, this operation that, that they brought the pictures of, I mean, th- these buildings are just huge, I don't even know how those are legal, and they went in with equipment and didn't say what they were doing, and they didn't notify their neighbors, you know, if you went to your neighbor and knocked on the door and said, hi, I'm just letting you know what I'm doing next door, a little bit of goodwill goes a long, long way. And it is a responsibility of the marijuana growers to do that. The responsibility is on your shoulders, how people are going to look at you and how they're going to treat you. And there have been some abuses, equestrian facilities, the candy store up at Sandy, there have been abuses, and it has caused problems. But, as we move forward on this, I don't see why we have to continue, uh, with the abusive and, um, fractions between this. I don't know how I'm going to vote on all this, but we're going to have more hearings on it. The Planning Commission will have hearings before us, they will make recommendations to this body, and then we'll consider them. But I tell you, we have a long way to go before we make any decisions on this, nothing is set in stone, and, you know, I want to thank all you people for staying here and listening and participating, it's been really nice.
Yeah, I, I really appreciated some of the testimony, yeah, Tootie's getting some hands up, some, the testimony tonight. You know, uh, we were told that there are forty-six thousand medical grows, grow, licensed grow-in operations in Oregon, and some eight thousand in Clackamas County. We've heard, uh, as, you know, as you've seen and heard, we've, our main complaints have been about the equestrian center up in Boring, and the- been about the equestrian center up in Boring and the ca- former candy store, or candy, uh, yeah, candy farm, uh, up on Highway 26. Uh, and then we've heard about a few others that, uh, are annoying some people, but if you think about the number of grows in this county versus the number of complaints, and I've checked, there isn't many at all. We've got some very good operators out there, some of which we viewed, or are good neighbors, who inform their neighbors and who are friendly with their neighbors, and nobody knows what they're doing, and that is definitely preferable. Um, the industrial land thing, we're going to have to, you know, really delve into that to see if, or the industrial properties, I, I'm concerned about that, but when I talked to a, a medical grower yesterday, he told me, because I was concerned about what people get paid, because we often, often talk about this industrial properties, we want it filled with, you know, uh, gross national product type, uh, operations, big companies, et cetera, but he says he pays none of his workers less than $15 an hour, and that's a big rage nowadays that is $15 an hour everybody should get, but these workers get paid over that. So I'm not overly concerned with, uh, you know, with the commerce that it produces, because it's a great deal of that. Um, lastly, I want to say that I am a child of the sixties. There's an old adage that goes, if you remember the sixties, you weren't there. Marijuana was all around us, and me in high school in the sixties, in college, the seventies and eighties, marijuana's been out there. A lot of this has to do with, and I think one of the gentlemen said it, I remember my parents made me go to a drive-in theater in Oak Grove, uh, to watch marijuana, weeds with roots in hell. Uh, that was the name of the movie, and you wouldn't have believed what this marijuana caused back then, evidently. Um, I think a lot of that has subsided. I do believe in medical benefit, uh, medical marijuana benefit to people, some people, I don't know. Um, because I, you know, I've watched my set of documentaries, I've certainly known some people who say they were benefited from it, and I don't think that was, you know, their mind trip, but I think they were genuinely benefited from that. But marijuana's been all around us, there's been a great attempt to stop people from using marijuana. It failed. Uh, the feds failed. The war on drugs, to classify this the same as cocaine or heroin is ridiculous. So now, they took a vote in this state, and in our county too, it passed. Interestingly, it passed by a higher percentage rate in unincorporated Clackamas County than did incorporated Clackamas County. And now we will go forward with setting regulations. Um, I believe, and I know that Washington County is developing rules and regulations, Multnomah County is, really is not much in court, unincorporated Multnomah County left out there, by the way, but certainly Portland is addressing this too, but we're going to have two big counties next to us, who are going to have a lot looser rules than us, and certainly they are not making any kind of move for an opt-out vote. So it will be here, yeah, as a single person, you know, a household can have four plants, there can be a half a pound of marijuana in every house in Clackamas County, and it doesn't matter where you get it, because once it's legal in Oregon, they can go across that precious county line and buy it there and bring it back. So it's here, it's here to stay. Uh, I'm most concerned, uh, with the recreational part, with its effect on youth. Now, we talked about this when we took this into consideration last year and this year, is that the juveniles especially are going to have more access to it, not necessarily going in a store and buying it, but having their older friend do it, or stealing it from their parents, and that's a grave concern, but that has to do with prevention and the responsibility of parenting more than anything else, I think. So ladies and gentlemen, it's been a robust discussion. There on the screen you'll see the schedule that Mr. McAllister had mentioned before about how you can be involved. I always recommend to people that they condense whatever their great thoughts are on paper, and that way you can talk for a lot longer than three minutes. Send that, uh, information into our planning staff, be there and testify on those dates you see, and, uh, we will move forward, uh, with the regulation, uh, reasonable regulations, and that word is so connotative, is it not? And somebody agree with me back there. Golly, thank you. Whoa, man, I'm getting the hands too. Thank you very much. Uh, now we're going to go on to the consent agenda, which is fitfully boring, and so if you exit, exit the back door and not through the middle ones, and I appreciate you all coming tonight. Thank you very much. All right, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
All right, Chair Ledlow, under the consent agenda, under elected officials, we have approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Department of Community Corrections, approval of a contract amendment number four with Bridges to Change Inc. for women's mental health, housing, and mentoring services. Under Business and Community Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Business and Community Services and the Northwest Economic Research Center at Portland State University for access to the Portland metro regional population and economic forecast reports, and acceptance of a license agreement to copy, display, and distribute the forecast reports. Under our development agency, approval of a contract with Happer Health Peterson Regalus Inc. for consulting services for engineering, design, and construction plans for the Southwest Connector Project, and that concludes the consent agenda.
And the public might have noticed, that is not Mary Rathke, it's Kevin Moss who slipped in to do that job, and I want to thank Mr. McAllister, by the way, and Nate Boderman, uh, for your work and your presentation. Thank you. All right, commissioners, you want to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Smith, further discussion? All right, Kevin.
All right. Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow.
Aye, passes five zero. And now, what we've really been, I'm surprised not everybody stuck around for this, because this is so exciting. It's the county administrator update.
I feel hurt.
Yeah.
Sure. So, so I actually do have a few items, uh, this evening. First is, is I, I did, uh, want to hearken back to what was, I thought, a very good turnout on Tuesday evening at our town hall, uh, in Canby. Uh, the subject of the town hall, of course, was ensuring safe, healthy, and, uh, and secure communities, and that's one of our five strategic priorities established by Performance Clackamas, our county's strategic plan. We had, uh, more than 25 members of the public show up for what I thought was a lively question and answer, uh, session that covered issues, uh, relating to how the county helps homeless veterans and manages road safety, along with the other topical issues. So thus far this year, with the town halls that we've conducted in 2015, uh, we've attracted just shy of about 100, uh, members of the public to participate and attend, which isn't too shabby at all, I think. I, I did want to take a moment, uh, to invite, uh, the public, uh, and those who are watching at home, to our next and final town hall of the year, which is slated for Wednesday, October the 28th, at the Resort at the Mountain in Welch's, and it starts at 6:00 PM, and the topic, uh, on that evening will be honoring, utilizing, promoting, and investing in our natural resources, so. Uh, then I've got a couple of kudos I'd like to share, uh, and, uh, one for, there are a couple of gentlemen in the room still here this evening that, uh, wanted to share this with. So, uh, we did receive a compliment, uh, from a citizen who actually testified here tonight, businessman Norm Rice relayed to our planning director, Mike McAllister. Uh, he said, "Thank you for the great, uh, for the incredible amount of work and time you and your staff have put into, uh, the whole marijuana issue in our county. At times, perhaps I, like others, have felt frustrated by what seems like forever to get the wheels turning, but I am indeed impressed with both the professionalism as well as the integrity of the entire process." And, um, thank you.
Don, you got a hand up, I saw it.
And, uh, and so as you know, I mean, in addition to Mike, of course, uh, this process has been served by Principal Planner Jennifer Hughes, uh, county, council representative Nate Boderman, thank you Nate, uh, and our, uh, community relations specialist assigned to DTD, Ellen Rogelin, along with our senior policy administrator, Dan Chandler. So thanks to all for the work they're doing on this challenging, complex, and provocative subject. And then I have one additional, uh, kudo I wanted to share. We did receive a phone call from, uh, Mr. Mike Barnett, who is a council member for the city of Barlow, offering praise for Mr. David Bertram, who, uh, is, uh, with our mediation and resolution services, uh, department and program. David, here's what he said. He said, "David recently helped the city of Barlow in regards to an issue of a barking dog complaint within the city. David had a wonderful style of offering hope that things could be resolved without conflict. He opened the door to communication between the city and the citizens involved in the dispute. David worked promptly on the issue and sent a letter that addressed the concerns of the city to the property owner. I would like to thank David for his help in offering solution support to us on this matter. I would like to thank Clackamas County for having the mediation and resolution services program and for David's assistance." So thank you, Mr. Bertram, for your work, and thank you, Mr. Barnett, for sharing those good words.
Well done. And now it's time for commissioner communication. I'll start with Commissioner Smith.
Um, there's a lot I could say, but you know, it's late, I'm going to pass and save it for next week.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I had an opportunity to sit down and look at $14 million of grant and, uh, money for justice reinvestment, and, uh...
We get it all, huh?
We get it all, yeah.
Yeah.
I was the swing vote.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, it's, it's very interesting, uh, the various communities, uh, the size of the communities and how much money they get, and, you know, frankly, sometimes how many clients they have, and some are like one, you know, some counties with one person there's, they're watching after, and they don't get much money, but, uh, they would probably like to supervise two or three, but, uh, this might give them the opportunity to do that, but that was very good. And I also went to DePaul event today, and I really wasn't that familiar with DePaul. They, uh, I think of Saint Vincent DePaul, but DePaul, uh, is an organization that works with rehabilitation of drug and alcohol, uh, victims or, uh, those with that, that disease, and I, I was very impressed. Uh, great organization. Of course, they always invite us folks, because we usually bring our checkbook.
Yeah, that's the truth.
It's actually pretty expensive when you go to these free lunches, but it was, it was good. I was, uh, very excited, and, uh, Governor was there, I mean, uh, half the room I knew, uh, so it was a good event. Anyway, uh, also Franklin. Your name's not Franklin, is it? Oh, there's Franklin. Franklin is a two-year-old 12-pound terrier mix. He's happy, but a little bit shy at first, aren't we all?
Did you say yappy?
Happy.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's a little bit shy at first, and I said, aren't we all? So please give him time to get to know you. He has a joyful wagging tail and loves attention. If you give his belly a rub and, and a back scratch, who writes this stuff?
That's for sure.
He will be your friend for life. That's what they always say. He wants to meet you soon. To get, uh, this great friendship started, uh, contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us.dogs, and I was trying to think, what's that dating service? I see on TV all the time. Yeah, uh, so go meet Franklin and, uh, bring him home to a great family. Thank you.
Is he from Yappy Valley?
Are you suggesting?
Commissioner Schrader.
Well, I really don't have much to say tonight. As everybody noticed, I am suffering with, um, allergies or something. Um, basically, I did have a meeting with Representative Ann Leiniger this week, and we talked about workforce and education, and we are going to be doing a town hall, uh, to that effect in Lake Oswego with some of the Lake Oswego counselors. So that's a good thing. Uh, Commissioner Smith and I worked on the Willamette Locks issue, uh, again this past week, and, uh, it looks as if it's moving ahead quite nicely. I think Commissioner Smith was, uh, champion in taking on the Corps of Engineers, so they should be very afraid, as far as I'm concerned at this point. Um, as far as tonight, as everybody, uh, heard, I really didn't have much to say, but I will tell you one thing that I was concerned about, that even as we're trying to move forward with sensible and appropriate regulations, we still had a lawyer come up tonight and essentially say, well, if we don't like it, there's going to be a chance of litigation. And I will just personally say from that remark, that, that isn't anything that particularly moves me at all. This is a very tough issue. Uh, I find it, it's one of the issues I really, I'll be frank, I really wish we didn't have to grapple with, but we do have to grapple with it. We have, uh, good people, I suspect, on both sides of the issue, and I guess I'm going to finish by quoting Shakespeare first, "Let's kill all the lawyers."
Oh, man. Segue into Commissioner Savis now.
Hopefully attorneys won't take offense to that. I know there was none literally intended, so, I know.
My daughter's a lawyer.
Oh, yeah, there's one right there.
I, I, I just wanted to ask, Bill, I, I can't, I'm having a, after talking to the one attorney who spoke, Amy Margolis, I'm really having a hard time finding any comfort at all in the regulations, and I think that for the most part, even my discussion with Nate Boderman here this morning, that I think we are vulnerable, and we, if we end up with all those being challenged and perhaps not exercising an opt-out, I think we're stuck with bear, perhaps a wide open, uh, or open season, uh, with no regulations. Um, and I think, again, uh, just to reiterate my rationale, I think that, uh, allowing other jurisdictions to try the regs and see what gets challenged, uh, while we're floating a potential opt-out, gives us some time and opportunity to craft something a little bit wiser. And, uh, like Tudy, absent my short comments, I don't have much else to say, I'll keep it short tonight.
Thank you. John Cor.
What happened to John? Where'd he go?
Oh, right here.
He lost the chair. Uh, it was, uh, catering to an Oregon reporter who has now left the room, so we're all safe. Um, well, on Monday, we had the Association of Oregon Counties District Eight meeting, which I chaired. Uh, the county commissioners from Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas County were there, talked about some statewide issues, regional issues. It was very healthy on Tuesday. And we had our town hall in Canby, uh, and that, that was, um, actually fairly well attended, but it was good to see some of the rural folk come out and give us their opinions on a variety of subjects. And then, um, yesterday was Eggs and Issues, uh, the Chambers of Commerce put on down at, uh, the Abernathy, Abernathy Center here in Oregon City. That was, uh, very interesting, because it had Congressman Schrader and a whole bunch of legislators talking about, um, what happened at the legislature and what may happen during the short legislative session coming up. Uh, I'd like to announce that on Monday at 5:30 at the Wilsonville Library, I will be with, um, Representative John Davis and Counselor Scott Starr of Wilsonville. We open ourselves up to questions, um, but I'm sure it'll be a good time for those of you who want to attend. And Kevin's going to flash on the screen, our last opportunity for town halls this year, the last one, is on, uh, is in November, and I'm stuttering because I don't have it here in front of me, and I'm waiting for him to put it up. Uh, yeah, Mary's helping him, she'll get it.
It's coming, Eric.
There it is. It is Wednesday, Oct- I said November, didn't I? Wednesday, October 28th, and the topic will be to honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources. Location is appro- appropriately enough, at the Resort at the Mountain at Welch's, and it starts at 6:00 PM and goes for an hour and a half. So everybody's welcome to that. Well, it's been an enjoyable evening, I certainly appreciate those who stuck around, and, and that many people showing up too, was, was really good, we got through it very fine. So there being no further business before the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners this day, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.